Good evening, everybody. You are at a common council of the city of Wausau. It is September 9th, 2025. The time is 6:35. We are at City Hall Council Chambers. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk, call the roll, please. The system didn't work last week. We had to do manual. Let's see if we can get her.
We have 10 voting members present.
And we have one proclamation tonight, and we have a group here to receive the proclamation. So let's read that, and then I'll welcome them up. Jane Johnson is here tonight. Thank you. Whereas the Constitution is founded on a fundamental trust in American citizens, and whereas on September 17, 1787, our constitutional framers signed the U.S. Constitution at Independence Hall in Philadelphia, forging a new government for the United States. And whereas the story of the framing, signing, and adoption of that epical document constitutes one of the most significant chapters in the history of our country. And whereas the United States Constitution stand as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. And whereas it is fitting that every American should reflect upon the vision and fortitude of our forebears in creating a charter designed to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, and provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and for the fortunate millions who were to follow them as citizens of this nation. And whereas the Congress, by a joint resolution approved August 2nd, 1956, has requested the President to set aside the week beginning September 17 of each year as Constitution Week, a time for the contemplation and commemoration of the historic acts which resulted in the formation of our Constitution. And whereas September 17 marks the 238th anniversary of the Constitution of the United States. And we celebrate this founding charter and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Doug Denny, Mayor of the City of Wausau, do hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. In the City of Wausau, State of Wisconsin, and I commend this observance to all citizens and encourage them to demonstrate our commitment to the United States of America and appreciation for the liberty our constitutional framers secured for us. Signed, Doug Denny, Mayor of the City of Wausau, September 9th, 2025.
I don't know if we turned the sign up. We're ready to go.
You're good.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Members of the City Council, for letting us be part of your meeting. My name is Jane Johnson, and this is Melinda Darris Bartel. We are members of the Wausau Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. In 1956, our group worked with President Eisenhower to establish Constitution Week from September 17 to September 23. Our present members are committed to reminding our Wausau community about this important week. Thank you for the proclamation, Mr. Mayor. Nice to meet all of you.
Thank you, Jane. And Jane came up to see me about this week or so ago. She had in her possession a little pocket Constitution. And so I had to pull mine out. I've been carrying it since 1988. And but it's a great opportunity. We do have some more constitutions up here, courtesy of our Congressman and Jane's group. Thank you very much. Up next, pre-registered citizens for matters appearing on the agenda and other public comment. We have three. First up is Linda McColsky. You have three minutes. If you could state your name and address all comments to the Chair. Thank you.
So Linda McColsky, 922 South 16th Avenue in Wausau. Mayor Denny, council members. First of all, I apologize for my outburst at the last meeting that I attended. However, that being said, it seems some of you have a very cavalier attitude towards spending taxpayer money as it relates to paying legal counsel in the case against Mayor Denny. One reason outside counsel was retained was for the purpose of deposing witnesses. Those witnesses ignored a subpoena and did not give just depositions. This is a violation, and they should be sanctioned. If you want this to be over with, as has been stated on more than one occasion, then stop the flow of money. The Ethics Board will have to make a decision based on the information it has. It is very unjust to Mayor Denny to keep delaying his hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Jonathan Smith.
Hello, Jonathan Smith, 1114 Prospect Avenue. Today, I am asking that you do not endorse the Wausau Avenue A2 Design Proposal or the mixture of A2 and C1. Instead, I am asking that a speed study be conducted and that additional public input meetings are scheduled with at least one alternative design proposal with dedicated and separated walking and bicycling infrastructure to be included within the existing right-of-way. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee recommended safety and mobility improvements. So far, this has resulted in dedicated left-turn lanes instead of a two-way left-turn lane. This does not go far enough. The design options presented to the Infrastructure Committee was not an honest attempt to reflect how these improvements could be made. Design C1 included everything, and to its detriment, demolishing buildings along Wausau Avenue and getting closer to citizens' property. In the end, adopting C1 for even 13th through 18th Streets will likely result in the multi-use path getting caught due to state restrictions, as I believe WISDOT will not pay for any additional sidewalk width outside of existing right-of-way. Multiple property owners have expressed that they do not want the road even closer to their houses. Speed is a key driver of crash frequency and severity. It kills 40,000 U.S. citizens every year in cars. Crash reports and residents in the area indicate that speed is a problem here. However, the city has not conducted a speed study. Speed hasn't been addressed in either design proposed. I grew up in Wausau. As a young person, I felt the only way to get around was the car. As a young adult, I moved off to the Twin Cities, hoping to live a more walkable and bikeable lifestyle. Getting a driver's license was a pinnacle moment in the lives of teens. However, things shift, especially when we talk about infrastructure. Less teens than ever are getting their license. The average used car price is 25K. Walking and biking expand choices, expand abilities for kids to get to school, for parents to get to work, and for older adults to get recreation safely. This infrastructure that could happen with city, county, MPO, and state coordination likely would cost the city outright, you know, maybe a million dollars to add a 10-foot wide cycle path for a minute or for a mile or so. It could be free for the local taxpayer if we advocate for it. I recommend that you do not endorse the A2 or A2 and C1 design proposals. Ask for better for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I might add that there was additional public comments submitted in the form of emails. I don't know if it was late last night or today, but they were in the packet as well. Up next is John Radke.
Good evening. John Radke, 703 Franklin Street. I am here addressing the closed session that you are going into tonight. I kind of understand a lot of the things that are in there. My main concern is I keep hearing that, well, information can't be disclosed because it is confidential information between the client and the attorney. I guess I really don't care about that. All I'm saying is that you're all going to be getting a breakdown of what the expenses were. And I'm really concerned that if that doesn't meet your expectations, is the explanation of how it was spent, to vote no on this and not continue this spending on, which is covered up by, well, it's client privileges. We can't announce that. That's all I'm asking, is take a look at what you're hearing in closed session that we don't know, and some of the things I think we should know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Up next is Communications Recommendations. The product that I was expecting has not shown up. You will be seeing that in the future for the poet laureate scenario. Up next is the Consent Agenda. Are there items that were asked to be pulled on this?
Item 25-0801.
So we're pulling the whole thing or just one item?
That agenda item. Off of the consent agenda.
Would you speak into the mic more so we could hear?
Sorry. There was a request from Alder Lukens to pull item 25-0801 off of the consent agenda. So that would be all four sets of minutes.
Okay. Then we also, I think we already pulled that. The Highway 52 was on consent. We did move that down. Okay. So we're good. All right. I would entertain a motion on consent less that first item. Motion from Watson, second from Henke. I'll vote.
You may begin voting.
No, my software's down. Oh, yeah, it's not letting me back in. It crashed, and it's not coming back up.
How would you like to vote on the consent agenda?
On the consent, I'll vote aye.
Motion passes 10 to 0 for the consent agenda.
All right. So the first item up then would be File 2508. Thank you, gentlemen. 250801, it's the approval of the minutes from the previous meetings listed. Would entertain a motion. Motion from Henke, second from Lukens. Alder Asmussen.
Thank you. Since we decided to pull this, I do have a concern. I noted in the packet that the minutes of the 610 meeting appear to have a memo appended to them that was submitted in addition to the minutes that were captured by the clerk. At a previous meeting, we had other minutes that also had some kind of augmentation memo for clarification.
Same ones. Same ones.
Same ones?
So we pulled this last, just for clarification, if I may. The last council meeting, this same piece was in there. It was pulled because Alders didn't feel they had enough time to process it, so it was put back in for this week.
So it's good that it's the same one and not a second one, because my concern is that the 610 minutes and the 610 meeting has become material information in an act of unresolved employee agreements. And I think that it is not appropriate for a clarification augmentation memo to be attached by anybody who is involved in that matter. So I would like us, if we're going to approve all these minutes, to approve the 610 minutes as captured by the clerk and recognize that the city clerk is the only record keeper and the official record keeper for our proceedings, and that every time we don't like the content of the minutes, we don't get to just attach a memo or attach clarification, whether that's created personally or whether it's created by AI. However it's created, doesn't matter. The clerk's minutes need to be our minutes. She and Cody are the official record keepers, and I would oppose attaching anything to those minutes because, well, specifically because those minutes are relative to that grievance. But any minutes, the official account needs to be recorded by the clerk. Thank you.
And they will be recorded by the clerk, but for the record, the minutes belong to the body. And it is not an uncommon practice for Alders to ask for corrections, additions. We have Alder Killian sitting in the room tonight. On many occasions, he's asked to have his comments that weren't put in, put in. We do not have a standard across all of our committees on or on this council for minute-taking. They vary widely, from detailed to not so detailed. There was a 44-minute discussion that was cut down to three or four lines. All I did was wanted to augment it with that. I have no problem letting this go. The parties that are concerned with it can certainly look at it and judge if the minutes are correct or not.
I think it's different, though, when one of us, as a sitting council member, asks for a revision to the minutes because our recollection is perhaps different or more complete. But then that discussion takes place on this floor, and then this body does decide if they're willing to accept or revise the minutes or not, or if they're willing to send the minutes back for revision or re-completion or not. We don't just bring in a written document and ask everyone to camp on. So, you know, that said, if we want to take the 610 minutes separately or whatever, I'm open to that. But I am not voting for minutes that have attachments that were not created by our clerk.
Thank you. So might one suggest a methodology for anyone to make suggestions on minutes? I mean, I wasn't going to come in and read that. It made sense to offer a compared and reconciled. And it was my suggestions, my suggestions. I offered them to the clerk, and that's where we're at. Alder Lukens.
There's a request to amend the item from Alder Neal. Was that intentional? To amend the item, Alder Neal?
Speak into the mic.
Sorry. There was a request to amend the item by Alder Neal.
I was trying to, I did not get like an indication on my iPad that anything went through, but I was going to present an amendment suggestion. But I noticed Alder Lukens is up to speak, so.
Let's take Alder Lukens first.
Thank you. I pressed to speak rather than press to request to speak before, so I goofed that up. But anyway, my concern is I would prefer not to have anything added to minutes by anyone, you know, to the minutes that are taken by the clerk. It would be okay with me to, and we'll see what Alder Neal is going to amend it. So I just don't want there to be any kind of question in any way by, you know, for me as a council member or anyone for a conflict of interest. And that if, you know, my preference would be that no council member, you know, no one append the minutes by the clerk, that it has been done by the clerk and that we stay with that same procedure, unless it came before, you know. I don't know if that would be a rules committee or not. But anyway, that's what I was going to say. Thank you.
Alder Neal.
Thank you. As I guess was sort of intimated a little bit earlier, I could see where we can pull 610's meeting minutes from consideration in this one vote and have it considered separately, and then we can discuss it at that point. I agree that, you know, changes to the minutes are requested and agreed upon here on the floor as a matter of course, and so we need to probably discuss that one separately. So I would just want to pull it from the other three, one, two, three collections of minutes and do it separately. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to amend, to split this into two different votes. Motion from Neal, second from Larson. Okay, you got them split.
Yes. So this is a motion to amend item 25-0801 from the Common Council to exclude minutes from the 610 2025 meeting.
Discussion on the amendment. Seeing none.
Motion passes 10 to 0.
All right. So do you want to take the easy one first?
That was a motion to remove it.
All right. So looking for a motion to accept the three minutes. I can read those dates, 6/24, 7/8, and 8/26. Not sure how we get that. Wouldn't I go to my?
Sorry. I had to press the discuss button. So this would be item 25-0801 from the Common Council as amended. So approving minutes from 6/24, 7/8, and 8/26.
All right. Entertain a motion.
We already have a motion and a second on this item.
Okay. So we have a motion from Henke, second from Lukens. Further discussion on those. Seeing none.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 0.
Okay. This one, we will need a separate motion on. Standby. Okay. Entertain a motion on 610 meeting minutes. From Neal, second from Henke. Alder Asmussen.
Thank you. So I guess what I'm getting at here with augmentation of the minutes or revision of the minutes, in the past, when we have thought that the minutes maybe were incomplete or didn't have enough detail, one thing we would do is we would hold up on approving those minutes, and we would ask the clerk to go back in between meetings and re-listen to the tape or review the video and add additional detail. But that still comes back to us as he or she heard that and maybe captured detail more in depth. And so that certainly could be done here. But I do think that we set up an odd precedent if every time we don't like the way the clerk's minutes came out or the way the staff minutes came out, that we just attach a memo. I don't think that's the right way for us to do our business. And so I do think that if we adopt that type of practice and that becomes normalized, it does signal lack of confidence in the clerk's office and their work product. And so if we want those minutes to be more detailed and we want them to capture more of what was said, we could send this back to them to do that and bring it back to a future meeting and not just attach someone else's account of what they think happened. So I. So I, I do want that custody of that process to stay with the clerk. Thank you.
Fair enough, but certainly not. It's, it was once in this, my memory on council and as mayor, so that this has happened one time. I think we would all agree that the June 10th meeting was an anomaly. So that's, that's, that's all we're doing is trying to correct the record. Alder Killian. Oh, I'm sorry.
There's a motion to amend from Alder Neal.
Time you're looking at.
Alder Killian has already, is in queue to speak, and then I would happily offer my amendment after that.
Alder Killian.
Sorry, I can't select it until the amendment is gone, so.
Okay, as a first-term alderperson, I haven't encountered this before, so I would like to ask our parliamentarian if it is appropriate or not appropriate to add additional information after the minutes have been finalized.
Drafted.
I really don't know that, so I don't want to vote on it without asking.
Mayor, am I allowed to speak?
City attorney. Yes.
I think I shared that with you all by email today, I think, in this circumstance. I mean, I agree as a general rule with Alder Rasmussen that it's unusual and probably inappropriate. The clerks take the official minutes, the video exists anyway. We rely on the clerks to prepare the official minutes. The body decides if you, in reviewing it, you disagree, you can make amendments to it. The majority decides what the minutes are going to say. I think this sets a precedent of somebody, anybody, just drafting their own set of minutes and submitting them and saying, well, I want these appended into the official minutes. This is the official record of the public body for the public from here on out. And in this particular instance, I think I've already shared with you that I think it's inappropriate under the circumstances.
Thank you.
Well, I would respectfully ask what other method to communicate with council other than a memo to give them the opportunity to make the augmentation or corrections. I'm not here forcing it on anyone. It was a suggestion, and you can read them for yourself. I've watched that segment of the, of the tape. It's 44 minutes, probably 10 times.
Point of order.
Alder Larson, what is your point of order?
My point of order is, is that we as a body here are discussing the minutes of the six ten meeting here, and you as a chair, our chair of the meeting, and if anybody needs to express opinions here, we are the body here that discusses what needs to be done and what not needs to be done. And I, I think you're out of order by, by placing your opinions down our throats. It's, it's not the, it's not the, the purpose of the chair. Thank you.
Alder Larson, it's a, it's a, it's, I don't, that is not well-taken, so what I'm, what I'm doing, it's a process, it's process, Lou. It's a process item. It is not an opinion. Thank you. Alder Killian, are you still up?
No, I think the parliamentarian answered my question. She feels that it's, was not appropriate, so not, not knowing any different, I need to take her, her word as our parliamentarian. Thank you.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll address that email at a later date, but that's, that is, is also in an appropriate commentary on motive and.
Point of order.
All right, Alder Hanky.
I think I was up second.
Okay.
There's a point of order.
Okay, point of order, Alder Lukens.
That your comment about the email, that we are speaking about this issue. The email is not, that's not what we're talking about.
It was just entered into the discussion by the city attorney.
No, you, you started speaking about it, though, Mayor. We have to stay on, on topic.
All right.
About the credibility of the email.
Point of order, I think we're out of order.
Let's, let's, let's go to Mr. Neal, please.
Do you want to rule on the point of order? It was sustained or not sustained? The, or if it was, sorry, sorry, if it was, oh my God, sorry, I flipped the page for the last one. If it is well-taken or not well-taken by the chair.
Got you, okay. All right, it is not well-taken, but we will move on. Alder Neal.
Okay, thank you. Well, quite simply, I moved to amend these minutes to remove the augmentation memo that's being discussed and, and then move to vote on approving the original minutes as recorded without augmentation.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion of, motion to amend. You're gonna have to help the clerk get that one in here.
To remove the augmentation memo and approve the original minutes as presented?
That's correct.
So, so motion to amend, motion approving common council minutes from six ten 2025 to remove the augmentation memo and approve the original minutes as presented. Motion by Neal, second by Rasmussen.
Discussion?
I'm frozen again on my software, so you can record my vote as I.
Motion to amend passes 10 to 0.
Okay, so the, the attachment was just in the packet, was not attached to the minute. So let's vote on the minutes as presented, drafted.
As, you ju, you just voted on the amendment to remove the augmented memo from it. So now you would be approving the minutes as amended, removing that. Alder Hanky, was it?
Alder Hanky.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was just going through the minutes a little with a fine tooth comb here, and I do know that sometimes that infrastructure meetings and other minutes I've seen from committees, it'll say like, refer to YouTube and it'll put a link on there. I don't see that on our minutes. I mean, just something I might recommend adding in the future to our minutes. That way, and anyone can go and find that YouTube video, as long as YouTube is a thing. So I, just a recommendation or a thought I had. Thank you.
That is a very good idea, because it's definitely an entertaining watch. Anything further?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 0. Unfrozen.
All right, now to the hard work. First file under resolutions and ordinance is file number 25-0902, resolution confirming appointments of the mayor of the city of Wausau to historic preservation commission, police and fire commission, and the ethics board. So we have three, three controversial appointments here tonight. First one is Mike, Michael Martins. Michael, do you want to give us the skinny on the controversy? Or I can, I can describe it.
I, I can address it. My wife is also a sitting member of the historical preservation commission.
Okay, and I don't want, I shouldn't mischaracterize this controversy, but it let's, it's, it was, it was a nomination, it was suggested by the, the historic commission itself, and the vice chair was, who was also an attorney, opined that he felt it was not a conflict. Also discussing with the clerk, we determined that, you know, there, there are six citizen members, and there are also an additional three members. One is an alder representative, there's a historian, and there's an architect. So you have nine total members. So when Mike and, Michael and his wife Christine are camping in the teardrop, they're not constituting a meeting of the historic or a quorum. So I feel that's acceptable, and Mike is a, is a, and his wife are both avid historians and, and history walkers, so I think that's a good selection. The second one is former mayor Rosenberg. First, I must commend Rick Reyer. Rick Reyer was filling a position, he's no longer capable of, of making the meetings due to a medical condition, and so he offered his resignation just, to me, just last week. And I know he is friends with former mayor Rosenberg, lives in the neighborhood, but long story short is, this is one of the only committees or commissions that, that by-state statute, statute requires and has a test for not more than three members of the same political party. Now, if you recall, we did test that last, the last time, or one of the last times that I nominated somebody to this commission, and, and I made it a policy that every April we would test that, that rule and survey, the secretary of the commission would survey the members and determine what the political parties were. We did that last time, we found we were still balanced. And I would think, in the spirit of the law, we should seek for balance, and some balance of diversity of thought. You know, it's like that show, the, the Fox News show, The Five, there's always one liberal sitting in the second chair from the left. So that's a little balance that they put to it, and I would think if, if Mayor Rosenberg was here today, she would probably own that, that role. So that's where that sits. Our PFC is solid. I've discussed it with them, I've discussed it with police and fire, I've discussed it with any of the stakeholders who would be concerned both politically and practically. So I'm, I'm, so that's there. And then the last one is to the ethics board, similar concept here. If you've watched any of that on YouTube, you'd see we, we could potentially use some diversity of thought. She's a former council president, water commissioner, former chair of finance and HR, fully qualified, and that's that. Entertain a motion.
A motion to amend from Alder Neal.
A motion to amend, do we not, do we, can we amend before we have a motion to?
We have a motion.
We have a motion and a second, okay, from Neal and from Lukens, okay? Motion to amend, Mr. Neal.
Yes, thank you. I think it'd be appropriate to not consider these appointments en masse and to do them separately, so that's my amendment.
I would second Tom's request for three separate votes, that we take each body separately.
It's meant to be an all or nothing proposition here. Well, we have another option, we have the next historic preservation meeting is 9/24. We meet on 9/23. Police and fire commission, former mayor Rosenberg is not going to be here for, we meet on 9/23. The ethics board could be concluded this week, Friday, as they will be considering motion, motion to dismiss, but it is your pleasure, you've got the motion for an amendment. Do we have a second?
I, I'm the second.
We're still going to have three votes here.
Well, the motion to amend is to amend number 25-0902, the resolution from the mayor, to take each appointment separately. You may begin voting. So then as amended, it would be the, the resolution as amended would be taking up just the first appointment?
Sounds good to me. Michael Martins.
Okay. I'm going to restore the queue. Trying to make it easier for you to see. So there are two requests to speak.
Okay, Alder Killian.
Regarding the historic preservation committee and not having Alder Gisselman any longer, I can't think of anyone who I would support more than Michael Martins. His family has been super active and extremely helpful to our city with the preservation committee, and I think Michael will only add something positive to that, so I'm completely supportive of that appointment.
Alder Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we just talking about Alder Martin's position at this time?
That is correct.
Or, or are we talking about all of them in general?
Just Mr. Martins.
Okay, then I don't need to say anything except, anything that, except for I will be endorsing my vote for Alder Martins.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to echo the other two comments. Alder Martins is extremely knowledgeable, skilled, dedicated, and I appreciate all of that about him, and I can't think of a better candidate for it either, so I will be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further.
You may begin voting on the appointment to the historic preservation commission.
Just call me as I.
Motion, motion passes 10 to 0. Okay, I'll add the second one.
All right, up next is. Got it in there? Okay, motion from Neal, second from Rasmussen. Any discussion?
You may begin voting.
Ready? Oh, you got it. All right, looking, would entertain a motion on Ms. Hadley to ethics board. Motion from Tierney, second from Martins. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One. Once again, I will not be supporting any of these three nominees for the Ethics Committee at this time. This is the third time now that you've brought people to fill these so-called vacancies. And the first two times, we had voted it down because of the ongoing investigation. And because the investigation is still ongoing, I don't feel, until that incident is resolved by the Ethics Board, I don't feel it appropriate that we be replacing anybody on the Ethics Committee at this time. So I will not be supporting any of the three. Thank you.
Okay, just for the record, we're not replacing anyone. There is indeed a vacancy. It's not a so-called. It is a vacancy that was left by Brian Mason when he, when he exited upon his term expiration back in April. And I did bring it back, so there's only one, not three. There's one.
Well, it doesn't matter. I'm still not going to vote.
I'm just clarifying, there is a true vacancy, has been. All right, up next is Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. This, the circumstances have not changed since the last two times that we considered these nominations. And it's not a matter of voting the people down. It's a matter of wrapping up one process before you begin another. And it really is not fair to the applicants who we held action on the two prior times. I think that any and all of these folks may be qualified. But every other time this has come forward, the decision of this body has been that we would wait to adjust the composition of that board until that board finishes the matter that's currently before them. Whether they finish it or dismiss it, I don't care which. But that has to come to some kind of conclusion before we shake up the components of that board. The people that started it need to get it done. And so I think that these nominations are, they're premature, just like the last two rounds were. I mean, it's unfortunate that it's taken as long as it's taken. But as long as that board has a functional amount of members to get this job taken care of, I feel like they need to take care of it. I certainly hope they wrap it up sooner than later. But I also think that we should not be adjusting the composition of that board. If we've declined to do that two prior times, nothing has changed between then and now. And I feel that that's inconsistent of us if we don't proceed the way we've been this entire time. Thank you.
Well, one of, one of your arguments back then was that we can't put new people into a situation that's ongoing. Well, that was six months ago. We could have had a child figure this out. It's like Groundhog's Day. You're right, nothing has changed. It's Groundhog's Day. Here we are, six months later, waiting, waiting to move this. So I'm offering it. You know what? You can do what you want.
Well, my thought is rather than deny the people who may well be qualified, we should just table this whole business.
Alder Killian.
I'll move to table this.
Alder Killian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand all of the reasoning that has been presented, that we don't want to change the functioning of what's happened. However, it's my understanding that when there's a vacancy. Now, again, maybe we need to refer to the parliamentarian because it's my understanding that when there is a vacancy, and there is a vacancy per se, and I don't think this is a, if I'm correct, I understand that this is a person who is kind of a fill-in person. So I don't know that they would be involved in the actual deliberations unless it was necessary. I would like the parliamentarian, maybe I'm wrong, but that was my understanding. So is there a requirement for the mayor to appoint someone if there's a vacancy on the Ethics Board?
No, there's no requirement.
So these vacancies can just remain open?
Yes. We've had other vacancies that have been there for differing periods of time on other committees and commissions. And I think you have to look at the situation. This says replacing Brian Mason, but it looks like the term ends 4/30 of 2028. So is that, that's not a fill-in. That's a two-year full term, I'm assuming. I don't know. I wasn't consulted on this. So I haven't looked back at any of the minutes when this came up previously to refresh my recollection.
I can clarify the term. The terms, if you recall, were misapplied. And we had four members serving simultaneous terms that expired on the same date. So Mr. Mason did the honorable thing. He left when his term expired.
On 4/30/25.
Right. So the mission for me was to get them back in alignment. And the alignment would be, and I worked this through with the clerk or the assistant, the deputy clerk, is we took the oldest to the newest. And Hostler was deemed to have had the five-year term. The next one was, DeWos was, was of the four-year term. And we then delegated, determined that Brian Mason should have had a three-year term. So he actually served two years longer than he should have. So that thereby, this one being a two-year, a three-year term. So that was, that's the attempt of that.
So his, his term expired when?
4/30/2025. Brian Mason's term expired 4/30/2025, and then he resigned.
Okay, thank you.
He left upon his expiration. Right.
There is a, sorry, there's another motion to amend from Alder Larson.
Who did we have first, Neal or Larson? Neal, do you have a short comment?
I'm sorry, yeah. My only comment is that there still remains a working quorum of the board. Now, I could see if the quorum was busted, that we would be beholden to fill so they could regain a quorum to continue their activities. But that is not the case. So there's no need to fill any vacancy at this time. And I agree that now is not the time. Optics alone would say you don't, you know, do that in the midst of an ongoing investigation. And that's nothing against the applicant at all. It's just that now is not the time. Thank you.
All right. Motion to, Mr. Larson, what is your amendment?
Oh, I would like to amend to table these, these three applicants.
There's only one.
Okay, we'll start with the first one. Then I'll make a motion to amend and table the first one.
Okay, if we have a motion to table, would that be a correct rephrasing of that, clerk?
If I, if I may ask the parliamentarian, I believe that would be a motion to postpone or table would be separate from a motion to amend the item.
Correct.
Alder Larson, I'm, if it's your wish, I will cancel this amendment and then add a new item to a motion to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Make a motion to, to just table these.
The one appointment or what do you mean when you say these?
The mayor made it clear that we're only just talking about the one appointment at this time. So I'm tabling the first appointment.
Correct. To clarify, there was only one appointee to the Ethics Board that was in this resolution. And the other, the one to the Historic Preservation and the Police and Fire Commission were already passed.
Right.
Okay.
So we're talking about the first appointment for the Ethics Committee.
That is correct. So we have a motion to amend from Alder Larson. I mean, to, okay, we're going to fix the amendment. All right, so it's a motion to table. And do we have a second?
I'll second the motion to table.
Second from Rasmussen. Discussion on tabling.
Do we have to state, though, how long it's tabled until? Because in the past, when we've tabled them, we've put a timeline. We tabled them until either, either the conclusion of the matter or an absence of a functional quorum was what we did last time. So I don't know if that needs to be clarified because usually when you lay something on the table, we're usually asked for a timeline. If it can be indefinite, I guess it doesn't matter. But I think for clarity, it, it really should mirror the other tables from before.
I would go along with that in my motion.
I think it would be just as easy to do a table indefinitely. I mean, I, we're hooking a lot of conditions on this. Let's just vote on it. The motion was made. We're going to, we're going to table indefinitely.
And that was seconded by Rasmussen, correct?
And there's no discussion?
On a motion to table. Okay, so you may begin voting on the motion to table. Motion to table passes 9 to 1.
Thank you. I think that dispenses those.
I apologize for the formatting.
Okay, you ready?
Yep.
All right. Up next is file 250910. It's an INF resolution approving design recommendation for State Highway 52, East Wausau Avenue, from North Sixth Street to North Eighteenth Street. It was approved 5 to 0 in INF. Motion from Neal, second from Henke. Mr. Neal. We have Alan here tonight, Alan Wyslawski, our city engineer, if we have questions for him.
All right, thank you. Well, right off the bat, I will not support this tonight for a variety of reasons. I'll just bring it to everybody's attention that on the agenda here tonight, under this item, it indicates INF approved at 5 to 0. I, and if this is in reference to the August meeting, I was not in attendance, being out of state. And reading the minutes, it looked like the vote was 3 to 1 in my absence. So that's not accurate. Back earlier in the summer, Alder Henke, Chair of INF, noting my many concerns and comments about, you know, alternative ideas for this project, volunteered me in meeting, saying, would you like to sort of be, you know, the person that can, you know, work with staff on discussing these various alternatives, reviewing options, that sort of thing? And I said, sure. It's now September, and I've never received any notification of any alternative ideas. Never had a meeting, never sat down looking at new drawings or anything. There has been a slew of comments from citizens, people that live on that, that street. And to say that they're disappointed falls far short of what they really are feeling. They're feeling completely ignored. They've gone into great detail, into great pains to bring forward ideas, options. They've done research, and they've met with nothing but the cookie cutter response that has been there since day one. Jonathan, who spoke earlier, the Chair of the Bike and Ped Committee, has done incredible work and come up with incredible ideas. And he's based them on fact that he's researched and met a wall. This, this project is a generational project for that neighborhood. And it really, I think, provides an opportunity for us to look at this kind of thing with fresh eyes and to look at ways to do things, you know, the best way for the neighborhood and for an evolving scenario for the way people get around. It's just, this cannot be approved as this product forward so far. I, I am so opposed to it. I'm all sitting here shaking. I, I really hope that we could have a much better effort going forward to look at options, to be creative, to find ways to deal with some of the real issues that have been brought up time and time again on this street. I mean, have we ever looked at single lane turnabouts in the most problematic intersections? Might be able to be done with minimal taking of any property. Have we looked at taking bike lanes out of the street and having that multi-use pathway added instead with no taking of property because you'd just be shifting a footprint instead of taking property? There are so many things that we could look at and put on the wall and really have a look at. And I just feel that this has not happened. And we've got pages and pages and pages of stuff in here going back to April or May or whenever. But nothing new in our packet. Nothing new that reflects the many requests from Bike and Ped, from more than one neighbor on that street, and from myself as well. Nothing new. So I will oppose this. And I hope everybody else sees a need to not accept this kind of cookie cutter solution. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to agree with Alder Neal that, you know, this, the way it's listed in the agenda here is misrepresenting it because actually, there should be two votes on this because we held two votes on this. And one, and one, first of all, if you remember, earlier this summer, we voted on streetlights. And somehow, that got voted down 4 to 1 as well because of the fact that some, my colleagues felt that it would be appropriate to have four blocks of decorative lighting at a cost of $350,000 to the citizens rather than just going with the standard trombone lights for the whole, for the whole area. And then, second of all, you know, I'm not, I really, sitting through the last meeting, I was basically, I was flabbergasted and embarrassed because, you know, we have engineers here. We had a lady here from the Wisconsin DOT. And we had different, various things to choose from. And the committee chose to cut and paste, you know, on a, on a 12-block area, you know? And this is the future of our city. This is a highway coming into our city. I mean, you need some kind of consistency. You don't need a cut and paste corner here, a cut and paste corner here. You need some consistency to it. I, I don't know what to do from this point. I really don't. I, I thought that the A2 was, was recommended. I believe it was the A2, correct? And Alan was recommended from staff from the get-go. That was, the original plan was to go with A2. Then it got somehow just all scrambled up into a cut and paste mess. You know, and, and I'm not an engineer. And I don't know if any of my colleagues are engineers. But it's, we need some kind of consistency through here. I don't, and if, if and when this does come back to a vote again, we also need to vote on the streetlights separately, just as we did in committee.
The streetlights aren't germane here, Mr. Larson, nor is the motivation.
They are germane because it's in, if it's in the packet.
They are in the resolution.
They are germane because it's in the packet. I believe around, it's between page 214 and 219.
Keep going.
So, so I won't be supporting this tonight. And if this does fail tonight and go back to the drawing board, I would ask that we bring it back with two votes for the streetlights and the street design. Thank you.
Okay, we might have found the discrepancy in the vote here.
Sorry, so looking at the minutes that are in the packet, it looks like the design for A2 was passed on June 12th, June 12th of 5 to 0. And then C1, design C1 for the street lighting, was passed in August, and that was 3 to 1. So it should, the resolutions should say the committee action. One item was five to zero, and the other one was three to one.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. This project actually came to my attention when I saw the media coverage of the INF meeting after there was a headline about the committee emerging with a blended design and the essential stitching together of two different alternatives. And that immediately caused a call from my phone to engineering. Because I will say that I spent proudly 15 years on the former SISAM committee, which is now INF. And if there's one thing I learned during that time, engineers make recommendations for what works. And you can have community-sensitive design elements, and you can have functionality elements. But what we have to look at with infrastructure is consistency, flow, and what works. The proposed design for this, this A2, I believe, was what's called a two-way-with-turn lanes. The abbreviation, they call it a twiddle. It's similar to the functionality that we've, after years of conflict, put on Thomas Street. So it's had a proving ground there. We know it works. The flow of traffic continues, and people trying to make a left turn have the space to get out of the way and let the other traffic continue. Now, that design was adopted from Sixth to Thirteenth. Perfect, there's a lot of rear-end collisions happening there. But from Thirteenth to Eighteenth, that design varied. And I really think, I'm gonna offer a couple amendments. You need to continue up the hill with the twiddle. When you've got that design, where you've got the horseman traffic at Thirteenth and the Wausau East traffic at Eighteenth, you need one consistent design that flows. People need to be able to get out of the way, make their turn, and the rest of the road needs to keep flowing. So I think changing the design scheme at Thirteenth is a mistake. I think that we need to continue with the twiddle design from Sixth all the way to Eighteenth. The other thing I think is a mistake and potentially an expensive one. Every time we talk about a multi-use path separated from the right-of-way, that is expensive and it's risky. Because if you can't work within the right-of-way you have, and you have to acquire land, when you try to put in a sidewalk, you do a temporary limited easement. Residents are usually willing to let you do that. Because you compensate them for it, and you move on. They let you use their space for a period of time. If you have to go to them and acquire right-of-way to make this path happen, if one resident in the corridor says no, you're dead in the water, and so is your project. So this also becomes a multi-use path to nowhere. It has no connectivity. You build this expensive trail for five blocks from Fifteenth to Eighteenth. It has no connectivity to any established trail. And there is no plan here or at the MPO for any trail to link to it. So you create this great passageway that has a finite end, like nowhere. And so, the original plan called for sidewalk up the entire south side. That's continuity. Now, the bike lanes, absolutely necessary. I think bikes and cars need to be separate. But I do think that for pedestrian safety, the sidewalk will do the trick as long as it's continuous all the way up the one side. Because you have that safe harbor for pedestrians. And the bike lane, it's not a Cheryl lane. A standard bike lane is protective for bikes. So I'm not, there's also limits on what the DOT is willing to pay for. They are our partner in this. So when we talk about designs that are not consistent, designs that don't meet engineering standards, when we talk about lighting that is just extra, what they're willing to pay for may be compromised. And on roads like this, we need all the help we can get. And so, you know, if they're willing to pay for Cobra Head lighting, which is the lighting that's on Grand Avenue, Stewart Avenue, Seventeenth Avenue, works awesome. If they're willing to pay for half of that, we need to seize that moment. And if the lights are part of this, and they ramp up our borrowing and our costs by $350,000 to put decorative lighting in, which needs to be placed closer together... Remember, when we tried that on Third Street, it looked like a landing strip, and everyone complained. That lighting is low voltage. It has to be placed closer together, and you actually get less effect than you get with a standard Cobra Head LED fixture. The new ones are really good. So I'm gonna offer an amendment that I think fixes some of this. If that fails, I think we need to refer the whole project back to INF for rework. But engineering recommendations are made for a reason. And if we then decide that we're going to, you know, look what happened with Thomas Street. It took us 10 years. We can't let this turn into Thomas Street. Most of the complaints coming off that street are for its condition. And we can't let it decay while we argue about, like, the design elements. So I agree with taking the lighting as a separate vote because it affects the cost. And I think a number of us have different feelings. This is not in the Central Business District. It's blocks from there. So we could afford to not put decorative lighting there and save that money. So the amendment that I would make is, I will push my amend button, assuming I'm not frozen. Okay, so the amendment that I would make is that we adjust the design to adopt option A2, which is the twiddle design, from Sixth to Eighteenth with sidewalk on the south side, no multi-use path. If I could get a second for that.
I'll second that.
Second from Larson. Motion to amend, and we'll let the clerk read that when you get that in. And it's second from Larson.
Okay, motion to amend item 250910, resolution from the Infrastructure and Facilities Committee to adjust the design to adopt option A2 from Sixth to Eighteenth Street with sidewalk on the south side and no multi-use path.
Discussion on the amendment. Seeing none.
Oh.
Oh, sorry, Alder Killian.
I'm not disagreeing with the amendment. I'm just saying that that kind of detail, just being, saying, we're gonna do this and instead of that, feels like a lot to me to digest. I guess before I would accept a plan and vote on a plan, I would like to have it brought back to us and presented more formally so that we can actually see what's being proposed. Also, I had some comments to make initially. I don't know if this is the appropriate time.
Just to clarify, this turns the design back to what they approved in June. This is not new.
Well, I appreciate that, but I'm not looking at what they approved in June. And I guess I'd like to have the opportunity to take a look at it. I agree that I'm not going to support what's currently there. But before approving something, I'd really like to have something in front of me so that I know what I'm approving. Thank you.
So if you have some further comment, I think we should take the amendment first. And then we, after that vote, we'll be on the main motion. You can discuss.
Thank you.
Before we vote, Mayor, could we get clarification from the city engineer as to whether or not he believes the amendment is viable?
Alan, the mic is yours.
Sure, thank you. One question I did have with the amendment is you had, there would be an A2 sidewalk on both sides of the roadway from 13th, oh, excuse me, from Sixth all the way to Eighteenth. And you had said just on the south. I think you were referring that to replace the path with a sidewalk.
To replace the path, correct. I have no interest in removing the sidewalk on the north either, where it's able to be installed.
So your amendment would be sidewalk on both sides of the road all the way from Sixth?
Correct, and the multi-use path is replaced with sidewalk between Thirteenth and Eighteenth.
That was my only question with the amendment.
Thank you.
So we have an amendment to the amendment.
Are you okay with the friendly amendment, Alder Rasmussen, to change that from?
I'll amend my, yes, I'll change the wording of my amendment to clarify that my intention is not to remove any sidewalk on the north side.
On both sides?
Correct.
And Alder Larson, do you agree?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we have the motion to amend, seconded by Larson again, as stated. We have Alder Lukens. This is on the amendment now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just because this is all so complex, and I've read, you know, I read through everything. But because I haven't been at all the meetings, my question is, before I can vote on this amendment, how does this line up then with what the Chair from Bike and Ped was asking tonight? I don't know if, I'm not familiar enough with it all or have it all straightened my head enough to know. I don't know if we can ask. Okay.
So Bike and Ped had requested a multi-use trail the entire length of the project from Sixth to Eighteenth. Was their recommendation?
That would, and that, but it would, it would not, it would not take any more of the right-of-way. Is that correct? It would be in the present right-of-way, right? Okay, that's...
No.
Well, we have one person shaking his head.
Because he's, I think, the Chair of, you're the Chair of Bike and Ped, right, Jonathan? Okay, so I don't know. Can, that would be my question, I guess. That's what I'm wondering. Because that's what I thought, that's what I heard him say tonight.
That was their recommendation, but that's not physically possible. What, you have to understand, this is a state highway, and the state running traffic through the city. There are design standards that we have to follow. The recommendations made by the Bike and Ped Committee and some comments, those are not possible. We can't reduce the lanes to 10 feet. I mean, there's design standards. That's the state has to go over. And we went through those in infrastructure and facilities quite in-depth. And I mean, we can go over those here again tonight. I have a laundry list of what we can go over.
Sounds like a lot of committee work.
Well, the committee did, in my opinion, infrastructure and facilities did do their work. They, we had three separate meetings with them, and they did come to a decision. And that is the alternate that is on the board up there, which would include the two-way left-hand turn lane from Sixth all the way to Thirteenth, and then going back to a, with no twiddle, from Thirteenth to Eighteenth, and the multi-use trail, pale, excuse me, the multi-use trail on the south side from Thirteenth to Eighteenth. Now, you are correct, Alder Rasmussen, in saying that that was kind of a hybrid. That, there's been several options considered here, you know. The original option approved did have the twiddle all the way from Sixth to Thirteenth. And then it kind of got to Bike and Ped, and then there was alternates. So they, this is what infrastructure and facilities came up with. And, you know, Alder Henke's the Chair of that. Maybe he could discuss this a little bit. But this was the alternate that was approved at INF.
All right, thank you. Does that answer your question?
The twiddle, so the amendment, the amendment to the amendment would be, would include a twiddle at Eighteenth, correct?
Correct. They would take it all the way.
The amendment is a twiddle through the entire corridor.
The entire corridor.
And that's...
That's the two-way-with-turning movements.
Yep, so I have to say that I drive that route regularly because I work at school there, and I do turn at Eighteenth. And, I mean, I have to say, I think that would be probably really nice there. Is that something that you're saying, would this, does that matter with the state?
Well, the state isn't in support, I mean, I want to put words in, but they are in support of the twiddle just because, you know, the state highway has to carry traffic, correct? And there is an abnormal amount of crashes, especially from Sixth to Thirteenth.
Yeah.
So the task there is to try and eliminate the crashes, move the traffic, eliminate the crashes. So I think, you know, the purpose of a highway, right, is to move the traffic, take care of the stormwater, the signals at Sixth, and to pedestrian bikes. So, you know, it's a multimodal system. So you need to handle the traffic. So, you know, we're handling the traffic there with one lane in each direction. And we're handling the accidents with the two-way left-hand turn lane. I don't think you can have a design that doesn't, you can't have a design that's not gonna take care of the crashes. It's an abnormally high crash rate area, and that's mainly to young, inattentive drivers with rear-end crashes. So the intent of the left-hand turn lane down the center is to, anybody who's waiting to make a left-hand turn can take refuge in that two-way left-hand turn lane so they don't get rear-ended. And we all know that that's a problem, especially with young, inattentive drivers. And the next thing, you know, how do you handle bicycles? Well, we are handing the bicycles in this. The Wausau MPO, their Bike and Ped Plan, put the bike lanes on the street. Our city planners recommend keeping those bike lanes on the street. So in any alternative we're doing here, we are keeping the bike lanes on the street. So there would be a dedicated bike lane that's marked with the bike symbols. So it does provide, like on Thomas Street or somewhere, where you see a dedicated bike lane. Right now, there is no dedicated bike lane. This design, with or without the twiddle, is gonna keep those bike lanes proposed, keep them on the street. And so then the third thing is, how do you handle pedestrians? Well, the proposal, there's several, the original proposal was to have sidewalk on both sides of the street the entire length. So that handles the pedestrians. So in my mind, you know, or not in my mind, but when we designed this as an engineer, you handle the traffic, you take care of the accidents, you take care of the bicyclists, and you take care of the pedestrians. So I think when we've gone through this, we've taken care of all of those. You know, Bike and Ped recommended a multi-use path on the south side the entire length. You know, there has to be a need and a purpose. There's not a lot of pedestrians out there. Is there a path we're tying into? No. Is there a path we're going to? No. Is there a need? I never, I never saw that need. But I mean, the committee chose to look a different, to move ahead, to recommend a multi-use path from Thirteenth to Eighteenth. And that's fine. That was their proposal. I think it would serve just as well with sidewalk the entire length. But I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. I think some of the ideas out there with going down to like a 10-foot lane and eliminating the bike lane on the road, that can't be done. The DOT has to meet certain standards. We have DOT representatives here. We have EMCS representatives here who are designing the roadway. That can speak to those specifics. But I can tell you right now, we can't go down to a 10-foot lane and shrink this thing down. You know, we have to maintain those minimums. Even if we don't put the bike lanes out there, if we don't mark them, that paved shoulder is still gonna be there, and that footprint's still gonna be the same. You can't just put two 10-foot lanes down there. So I think, you know, there's a lot of thought that has gone into this, and a lot of design parameters have gone into this by the DOT and by staff. And I guess I take a little bit, you know, cookie cutter and whatever ideas and things that have been said. So I kind of take offense to that a little bit. We have a very dedicated staff. We have a dedicated design engineer, one of the best in the area, in my opinion. And we have good DOT representatives. There's a lot of time and thought put into this. So if anybody has any questions, I can answer that.
Thank you. Alder Henke.
Thank you. I was just gonna talk about the process, and it's been covered pretty well already. I mean, we passed A2 50 with the recommendation and sent it to Bike and Ped, have them look at it. It went to Bike and Ped. They had so many amendments to it that I thought it deserved to be talked about again in infrastructure. So we brought it back to infrastructure. And I thought we brought forward a good compromise where we had the twiddle, took care of all the accidents from Sixth to Thirteenth, and then yet we were still able to add a multi-use path from Thirteenth to Eighteenth. I agree 100%. It doesn't go anywhere down the Thirteenth way. I would argue it goes to the high school going out to Eighteenth. And honestly, I could see it going all the way to X someday and going around X and, you know, being a really awesome trail. It's nice that we get to do that for all the business park, and we can't do that around the edge of the city. And I know there were a lot of issues there, and I asked Alder Neal if he could talk with city staff and, you know, make sure there were some of his thoughts in these designs. And sorry, no one reached out to you. I'm surprised you didn't reach out to someone. So I guess that kind of covers what I have to say. We originally, I would be happy with, I would support the amendment, A2 all the way through. I would also support the A2 just to Thirteenth and then putting the Bike and Ped path from Thirteenth to Eighteenth and, you know, get the groundwork for some sort of trail out there. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay. Up next, Alder Martins. And just a reminder, we're on this amendment as it's currently amended or constituted. Mr. Martins.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I was just gonna speak to the amendment because I, in the Infrastructure Committee, we went through a lot of discussion and thought, there was... we went through a lot of, of discussion and thought, there was, there was a pretty deep thought process on this, this, this project, and coming up with the blended plan is probably the best that we could, that we could do under the circumstances. One of the biggest, I think, one of the biggest concerns with this project, and it's, it's really difficult to see on these, on, on, on the maps that are, that are in the packet, is that, is, is the, the, how tight the corridor is from Sixth to Thirteenth Street, and especially those blocks from Sixth, Seventh, and up, up to Eighth even, are, you don't have a lot of space to work with, without take, you know, without taking houses, without taking buildings. And that's the reason, you know, in order to keep the twiddle, we had to dump the multi-use path. That was the concession we had to make in order to make it fit into the corridor without having an excessive amount of taking. And moving on to Thirteenth Street, you know, the, the twiddle addresses the accidents between Sixth and Thirteenth Streets. From Thirteenth Street onward, accidents are less of an issue, but the corridor doesn't get any better, because you've, on the south, you've got some very steep grading, and again, there's potential for taking, but it, in, in order to do that, you really disrupt the homeowners on the south side of the street, just because, just because of the, the grade from the road to their, to their houses. So amending the plan for that blended approach, the A2 to the, I believe it's the C2 design, was the, the best we could do, you know, to satisfy the DOT, Bike and Ped, and maintain a roadway that fits within that, within that corridor, so I will not be supporting the amendment. And I don't know, and, I don't know if we've got lighting in the amendment or not, or is that going to be a separate vote, or?
Well, there are two separate, two separate votes coming from.
So I'll, I'll speak, I'll speak about lighting later, then, so.
Or, or not. They were, they, the two different committees?
Yeah, they're, the, the lighting was, was voted on a separate time from the rest of these plans, so that's, I think that's, that's what the problem is here. There's a lot, there was a lot of votes going on, on this project.
Alder Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will actually wait, because mine, my comment is not specifically regarding this amendment, so I will wait until that's done.
Okay, thank you. Alder McElhaney.
I'm not going to be supporting the amendment, I'm not going to be supporting the real vote, I want this sent back. There has been numerous, numerous, I get a ton of calls, I, my district goes around that area, and the multi-use path is something that people really want, and I, I'm thankful for Alder Henke to point out that there are a lot of trails in the Business District that don't go anywhere as well, and I know I voted on those for the last five years, if not more. This is taking a lot, this is a very heavily traveled road, there is bumper-to-bumper traffic during school time, I'm, both ways, and I don't know right now, I don't have time to look at twiddle or not twiddle and figure out, are those, are those lanes, you know, because it is bumper-to-bumper. Are we, is there going to be enough room all the way up? I mean, I think that we're saying everybody can move over, will that be enough? Because truly, it is bumper-to-bumper. You can't, like, get in and out of Quick Trip onto Wassa Avenue during the morning, lunchtime, and again, right after school. I have had a lot of people complain about that they felt that their discussions with staff or within the public meetings were not taken into consideration. Now, I'm not sure, I'm sure they were heard, maybe we can't change some things, but speed has been a big complaint about that, are we looking at speed, or at traffic calming and speed? This is a neighborhood, and we are talking about two schools, Horseman and Wassa East, you know, those are the two major schools right next to each other over there. I don't feel comfortable with an amendment of changing a whole thing on this big of a project. I would just like it, two weeks can't be a big deal, I'd just like it to be, you know, sent back, or, you know, and bring it in after infrastructure next month, whatever, but I would like to see what the drawings would be if, if we look at a difference, and let the, let the community swallow that a bit, too. Because this is what people are seeing in the packet, and if we're going to make a fly decision tonight on a changing of a big project like this, I think that the public should have opportunity to, you know, ingest this, figure out, and we can get our calls in, and see how people respond. So I'm not going to be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Neal.
Thank you. Well, Alan, first of all, my apologies for using the, the cookie cutter term, it's not a, I guess it's just a throw-out-there kind of thing, it's a, wasn't meant to be a, a cut, no pun intended. I am concerned that, though, so many concerns have not really been addressed to those that have been mentioning the concerns. Again, Jonathan is, is in the, in the audience with us today, and I would invite him up if he would like to, you know, come back up to address some of his feelings about what has been offered from the committee, and reactions to that, and any cooperation he might have, you know, lacked or had. So there's that. I just want to say this, and this is with regards, I guess, to the amendments, I'm not speaking out of turn, that I, I do know that, you know, probably is the, some of the best that we see today, methods to calm traffic and to reduce rear-end collisions, is the use of roundabouts. I see them all over as I drive around the state and out of state. I see a lot of basically single-lane roundabouts. You know, a lot of our, our rear-end collisions, if you look at the, the plotted accidents that we received, are, are mid-block. Somebody wants to turn into a driveway, and bang, they get hit. With a single-lane turn, a roundabout, you hit that roundabout, you have to yield right away, and you go around it, and you can either take the right turn, you can continue on the great way you're going, you come around, you can take the left turn, or you can do a complete turnaround and go back the other way, if, if there was a driveway that you wanted to go into, a half a block down. So, I mean, this is a way to safely address, you know, rear-end collisions with a really minimum taking of, of property, because intersections by their very nature, not a lot of private property involved, and we're talking probably maybe three intersections or so. Now, I'm not throwing out solutions here tonight, what I'm throwing out is, it's been, you know, weeks, it's been months, the, the people that we've heard from, from the neighborhood have sent us impassioned messages that everybody has been copied on, and they feel they've not been heard, they've not been addressed. There are issues about the steep, you know, incline of their driveway becoming almost unusable, unusable with these designs. On a property-by-property, person-by-person basis, it's not been addressed. I, and I'm sorry, you know, Chair Henke from INF, no, I did not reach out to staff, because I was basically encouraged in that meeting that staff would be putting together options that would reflect our concerns, and that we would get together and talk about them, and they never came. And I, I'm disappointed about that. I had been asked by the chair to, to at least sit down and go over, you know, these options. Jonathan would have been happy to be there, I would have been happy to be there, but instead, what happened was, we just waited till the next INF meeting with another set of, of renderings. So I'm, I'm really, I don't, I don't think the process has been very cooperative with me, with the Bike and Ped Committee, and with people that have spoken up after, you know, the public information meeting, you know, in the spring, much has come forward since then. So to talk about what was said or agreed upon at a public information and meeting like in May, you know, doesn't pay any attention to what was said in June, and what was said in July, and what was said in August by people that live there. That should be part of this, and we should be able to sit down and look at, at renderings, and look at things, and take a pencil, and take a paper, and sit down and, and look at this on a, on a block-by-block basis. It's not a homogeneous roadway, it does have like kind of a bottleneck, you know, feel in certain areas, and it's more wide opportunity in others. So we need to look at it, you know, as in its entirety, you know. I don't think that this idea of just one thing with a twiddle, the whole length, you know, now we're completely done. Now, that may ultimately be what we do, but I sure like to be part of that conversation, you know, person-to-person, in a room, and let's knock it out. Jonathan will be there if you just ask him.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what to say, I work, you know, eight, 10 hours a day here, nobody has reached out to me. We, I, I sat in front of the Bike Ped Committee, I sat in front of SISM three times, you know, everybody has my number, so I'm, I, you know, and I didn't, I, to be honest with you, I did not realize, and maybe it was my, I did not realize that Alder Henke had appointed you to, I, maybe I missed that, I, so I guess if, if I didn't reach out to you, I apologize, I missed.
That's honest enough, okay? That's fine.
Okay, I'm sorry. Great, thank you.
Can I ask Jonathan to come up at all? Is that out of turn?
Let's dispense with the amendment here, and then when we get to the main motion, maybe we can.
All right.
Discuss how that works. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this thing has been beat to death already. I mean, we had already voted a five-to-zero vote on, on the, what has been amended tonight at, at the first INF meeting, and you get tidbits from here, and tidbits from there, and tidbits from here, and we're not going to be able to please everybody. We need to do what's best for the city and best for the safety of the neighborhood, and that's why I voted for A2, because that was, not only that, but that was a staff recommendations. And why I didn't vote for the split road that was proposed at the last INF meeting is because the C2 plan, I believe, would take more of, of residents' land, and when I asked how much more land it was going to take, they could not give me an answer. When I asked how much more it was going to cost, they were not going to give me an answer. So that is why I turned that down. I, I'm going to be supporting the amendment, and thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think it's just important, before we vote, to recognize that if you cannot acquire or condemn land takings for a multi-use path, and you cannot make smaller lanes to fit it in the right-of-way you have, you have rendered the multi-use path option in this scenario basically useless. It's impossible to do. The engineer just said, we don't have the right-of-way for it, you cannot, by state policy, make smaller lanes, and if the MPO and we have no plan to acquire land to create connectivity for a trail, that five-block stretch of really expensive trail could sit for 30 years. And we've been criticized out in the Business Campus, we have created stuff that, when it's built piece by piece, people criticize it as an expensive trail to nowhere. We've been sharply criticized for some of that. I mean, this now is avoidable, you know, and we do need to be consistent in our design when it comes to infrastructure, there's standards, there's approved and not-approved costs, and I get that sometimes with a project like this, there's impassioned pleas from concerned citizens, but also there needs to be an awareness by all of us and all of them, through education, what the rules say. Sometimes people can have powerful feelings about a project, but if their powerful feelings can't be accommodated, and there's a reason for that, there's a reason the design is the design, and we cannot, with our infrastructure, take some creative, non-standard, block-by-block approach, and hope that we get to a certain end. Traffic, when you look at infrastructure, it has to be safe and it has to flow, and that's the one thing that's been trained into us from DOT, and even locally with design standards. You don't want bottlenecks, you don't want high speed, but some of the issue with speed, if you have the right speed limit, and you have the right-size infrastructure, you, then you, and, and they're still speeding, you have an enforcement problem, you don't have a design problem, and we can solve that. But I just, that's why I think the, the other thing is, is this stuff operates on a timeline. So if we refer back and we take four months to come back with basically the same thing, which is what they voted on to begin with, this got convoluted when they started the second meeting, talking about lighting and decorations. So they were on the right path, until they weren't in the committee, that's how I feel. And that's what I got from the minutes, and that's what I got from the media coverage. So I feel like we need to stick with what works and keep this project on a timeline, because when you're dealing with state funding, if you're not ready when they're ready, your money is gone, and we need that funding. So I'm supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Neal.
Thank you. Just to be clear, now, there's been so many options and discussions and requests and things on paper, it's hard to say, you know, what particularly is being talked about at any given moment. I specifically remember looking at a cross-section of, of the street as, as presented, that had two four-foot bike lanes, which is the minimum width, you know, recommended, five would be better, but this was two four-foot bike lanes, without any reduction of the, the traffic lane itself, that was within standards, and I brought up in the meeting that I was at, not the one which I wasn't at, why can't we take those two bike lanes out? That's eight feet, okay? We're not adjusting anything in the roadway in terms of lane width, still remains the same. That eight feet comes out, goes off to the side for incorporation into the multi-use path, within the existing right-of-way, so there's no, there's no taking of extra property. I made this very clear in the meeting, I thought, and it was just an option, just an idea. Now, was it, was it responded to? Did I see it on paper? You know, was, did anybody say, no, that's impossible? But there it is. The, the footprint, I mean, the right-of-way would stay, you're shifting its use, you're not taking more property with that idea, and it was just an idea. Again, not the solution, maybe, but it was an idea, the kind of thing I would like to sit down and go over with staff.
That was discussed at the, at the meeting, that we cannot, even if we don't have that bike lane there, that four-foot is going to be there on a state project, we cannot lose that four feet. They will not just let you build a 12-foot lane and then have it, have the curb and gutter there, that four feet's going to be there, for like an urban shoulder. So the answer to that is no, we cannot, whether you mark it or not, that, that four feet's going to be there.
Thank you. Alder Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we're still on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My issue with the amendment and the plan that's proposed is I won't support either one of them. I won't support them, because the people who live in those communities do not feel heard. We've seen letters where they said they have not been responded to, and I think that we have to do a better job communicating with the public, tell them why it can't work, tell them why it can't be that way, but, and communicate back when you're called, and until there can be some kind of a compromise with the citizens that live in that area, I won't support any of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Henke.
Thank you. Just to that, we've had three infrastructure meetings now on this, we've had a Bike and Ped meeting, so anyone who says they can't say anything to this is, doesn't know what they're talking about. We've had so many meetings on this, it's ridiculous. It's been one person. Look at your emails, one person is holding this up. That's all I've ever seen at the meetings, that's all I've ever seen in the emails. So one out of 50, 60 people living on that street? So is this a? I've ever seen at the meetings. That's all I've ever seen in the emails. So one out of 50, 60 people living on that street? So is this a democracy or not? Because everyone else doesn't appear to have a problem with it. Sorry. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further, we're voting on.
Are we?
Hold on. Alder Killian.
I just wanted to say that I believe Alder Henke was referring to the emails that I asked to be sent to the Alder people today. And it was from one family, but I was going to address that in the original motion. The feedback from the, the individual that we got the email from is just not any ordinary citizen. He's a 16-year city planner with Sun Prairie. He has gone through projects like this repeatedly. And his comments to me when I called him today were very helpful. They weren't critical. They were reasons why people should be listened to and changes that can be made. So I will address these people a little bit further when we look at the original motion. But I want you to know that one family that Alder Henke is referring to was a very grounded, informed family and they did not feel listened to at all. And I do wish to address that when we address the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
I'd like to call the question.
We're there. Seeing nothing further. Oh, hold on a second. Do you, without objection, we'll take the vote if you want to go through the, too late?
Too many.
We're on the motion to amend. We had to call the question and we don't have a second on that. That I see. Okay, let's get the vote on the amendment. And we'll read it again so that, so we're clear. Do you want, you want me to do it? So the emotion, the, to amend from Alder Rasmussen was to adjust the design to adopt option A2 from 6th to 18th Street with sidewalk on both sides and no multi-use path. Is that the second part as well?
That's the original.
Okay. Clear?
But that includes the law.
We're, we're.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Okay.
A2 is the twiddle all the way up.
Okay, thank you. We, so now we're clear on, on that. All right.
Okay, you may begin voting.
Sorry, your, I didn't want, your phone went to sleep.
I would say no, mine won't let me vote.
Motion to amend fails four to six.
Okay, that brings up the main motion as presented. And we need some refresh on this. It's the approving the design recommendation for State Highway 52, East Wausau Avenue from North 6th to North 18th Street as outlined in the packet.
Bunch of people.
Okay, we've got a lot lined up here. How's everyone doing on the, I'm, I'm, without objection, I would like to take a recess for five minutes for restroom break. Seeing none. Let's be back here at 29 after, please.
I'm gonna go reset the door so it stays open.
Okay. And we've got to reset the door. It looks like we're going long. So keep it open.
It just wasn't working at all. It sticks right there.
So I think this is where we're at right now.
No, even when you want to go out.
I think you're, you're.
That's scary, yeah.
Ours has.
I mean, that's all correct, but I don't know. I can't.
But once you start, there is someone.
Yeah, right.
Right.
That's scary, yeah.
Ours has.
But once you start, there is someone.
Yeah.
Right.
That's scary, yeah.
Ours has.
I mean, that's all correct, but I don't know. I can't.
But once you start, there is someone.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Civil.
Okay.
So.
Well, I didn't.
I mean, it's under change.
I can't see it.
To design a site.
No.
I put it in much.
I kind of.
Like, I don't.
And then you can, this was a three-year.
Which would actually.
Which would actually.
Which would actually.
Which actually.
Which actually.
Which actually.
Which would 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 actually.
Which actually.
Which actually.
Should I walk along?
Why not?
I would.
I'll see.
But it's.
But it's.
And then which, like that would.
I mean, it's.
That we're not really wanting to serve.
I would say.
And that's like, it's, it's very.
So I don't.
I don't usually correct.
I mean, a lot of that happened.
Oh.
What happens?
Yeah, I mean, it does.
Yeah, exactly.
I think there's a concern.
And the comments we got.
Thank you.
So I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if they want to ask.
And they love the.
Yeah.
I mean, you log in because it's somebody's.
Questions.
What's wrong with this kind of like?
Have a.
Have a.
Have a.
Yeah.
So this is.
Project supervisor.
Okay, secretary.
Three minutes left. All right, let's rally back up.
It looks like we have everyone back.
Okay. All right, we're now back in session. Are we back on tape? And we've got the door reopened again for two more, two more hours. It will automatically lock. And when that happens, I'm leaving. All right, so just to remember where we left off, we're on the main motion on Highway 52 design. And we have up first is Alder Killian. And we, we do have some guests from the DOT and our lead, our design engineer here, Stephanie and Kevin. So at some point, if it makes sense to have them come up and, and help answer questions, they are here as well for us.
Would it be possible to hear from them right away? Because that may answer some of the questions we all have. Could we just yield the floor to hear from them both right away?
Alder Killian, are you?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, let's do that.
All right, good evening. Stephanie Christensen with EMCS. I'm the consultant project manager. And we have been hired by the Department of Transportation to help deliver the design of this project. So we're working closely with Allen as this is a connecting highway, a state highway. And Allen and I have worked together on a number of projects, West Wausau Avenue, Stewart Avenue, things like that. So we have a longstanding history of, of DOT work and working with the city. So obviously, we've been through a lot since, you know, bringing initial concepts out to the public in May. So there was a public meeting, you have that in your packet. And we told the public, right, here, we've, we've got these issues, right? So our main driver of the project is the pavement. And we have a crash history out here. We have rear-end crashes going on, mostly due to inattentive young drivers. We know this is a primary access point to the schools up in this area. So one is, we've scheduled the project and how do we address pavement and how do we address crashes? But along with those things, right, we have to look at drainage, signals, bikes, peds, all of those things that get wrapped into the development process. And when we went to the public, we lay, it is important that we lay out clearly, why are we doing this project? So I think we all realize the needs we have out here. And we laid out alternative, I'll just try to do a high level, right, an alternative A1 and an A2. So when we refer to alternative A, that's a three-lane section, the middle two-way left-turn lane or otherwise known as a twiddle. And in, basically, the difference between those two alternatives is the width of the lanes, right? A1 is more of, let's use the desirable range of standards. And then A2 is, is that pared-back range. And so for, maybe for reference, because you see A2 up here, we're using 11-foot travel lanes, which is the minimum travel lane. It's a state highway. We've got to move the traffic through versus that 12-foot travel lane. And then our median two-way left-turn lane is at a 12-foot width. The desirable width of that is 14, right? So we know we have some various pinch points along here. So trying to minimize those impacts. And maybe for point of reference, the existing typical section is, is basically two 12-foot lanes and then six feet to the face. So it's 36 feet face-to-face. This obviously is going to add width when we are trying to address the crashes. So that's, that's foremost. And as discussed, the crashes are primarily occurring between 6th and 13th, right? So the option is adopt a twiddle from 6th to 13th, and that will address the crashes. We did also at the last infrastructure committee meeting, look at what's called option C1. That included addressing the comments from the bike ped committee, looking at an option with a path on the south side the whole way. And then also addressing the comments received, which you also received comments from Mr. Clements. He's been active in providing comments for us to consider. So I think the premonition or the statement that we did nothing with the comments, we actually developed an entire alternative to present something that could be a compromise, addressing the comments. I think the real sticking point is the idea that we could just go to 10-foot lanes and take that shoulder off the roadway. That cannot be done. We have to meet state highway standards. So there's a range. You know, we might still have a foot or two, a foot on each side to play with in this current option. But we have to, we have to maintain an urban shoulder. So by nature, that urban shoulder then ultimately accommodates bicycles, right, with the width, the minimum width. So the minimum bike lane is four feet. A desirable bike lane is, is five feet. We're still having some conversations about whether we accommodate that in maybe a wider pan to provide some of the more desirable, the integral bike lane. But we're talking about managing road traffic. We're talking about managing bikes, right? So that's done in the bike lane. That inherently needs to remain. I think that's where part of the, the challenge comes, or maybe didn't come through clearly in the discussion or at the last meeting, which I know you couldn't be at, that we can only go so narrow. It's a state highway, right? And then how do we handle the pedestrians, right? So you can handle the pedestrians with sidewalks on both sides, sidewalks on one side, a path on one side, a sidewalk on the other. You know, there's a combination of things that you could, could do. So we evaluated those in C1 with a path on the south side, sidewalk on the north. And what you see here before you tonight, again, is the compromise after going through, through a couple rounds of the infrastructure committee with the, originally A2 was proposed the entire way. So this, this was the compromise. I think that there's some questions about, are we addressing speed? Are we calming traffic? Does this option address that, right? So we're using 11-foot lanes instead of 12. That's going to help slow the traffic down. We're reducing that twiddle, narrowing that footprint. The new standard is currently that we would use six-inch pavement marking. So we're used to seeing four-inch marking. That's going to. used to seeing four-inch marking. That's going to add some additional calming effect throughout the project. The way the roadway gets marked, it's going to help slow the traffic down. And one of the things we haven't talked about here tonight, and you see all those little red asterisks on the, on the drawings, and they all have the same asterisks. What those are is obviously, we're going to impact the trees. Between the excavation for the roadway, which we clearly presented to the public that, you know, whether, because we're excavating three feet just to build a pavement structure, we know we have drainage issues out here, and we're putting in new city sewer and water from 6th to 13th, refreshing all of those laterals. There's going to be some storm sewer repairs. We know we're going to get into those root systems. So, you know, we were very clear with the public that this is going to impact the trees. And one of the things that we heard is that, hey, ultimately, we'd like to re-vegetate the corridor with maybe smaller ornamental trees that can line the corridor, which is also a calming effect. So what you'll see on all of these exhibits, that green area, which is what we call a terrace area, that is five feet in width. That really is like the minimum if the city does want to re-vegetate the entire corridor. I know there were some suggestions in the comments received that said, hey, we, you know, demonstrated impacts to these buildings and we could have just taken that terrace area to zero. Actually, we can't take it to zero, especially with a multi-use trail, because you can't provide that clear distance to signs, light poles, and basically hazards for the multi-use users. So three foot is the minimum. What you see is five. If there was a suggestion to say, hey, reevaluate this and we want a three-foot terrace and a path the whole way, three, you know, two feet from each side would give you almost that width you need for the path. But then remember, we can't re-vegetate with trees, right? So we're trying to basically let you know, you have this much room and how do we fit, you know, all of these pieces in there while also providing continuity, right? We want to be careful of not looking at a consistent solution. And so those things, you know, were really about the traffic calming. And then again, I know there's been some requests about, we shouldn't move this project forward until there's a speed study. So a speed study can only come at the request of the municipality. The municipality must undertake the speed study and typically the, the purpose of a speed study is so that you can change the speed limit. The speed limit is already 25 between 6th and 13th. So statutorily, you know, maybe there's some wiggle room in the statutes, you could go to 20, but for this type of highway, the DOT would not likely entertain that. So you're really at the lowest speed in that area of high crashes. So the purpose of a speed study is, is moot because you're, the city isn't making a request to reduce the speed. And the speed between 13th and 18th, that's a transitional section, right? The houses are set back a little bit further. You're starting to work your way out of the city of Wausa. That's really appropriate for state statutes. So I guess with that, we, we have developed a range of alternatives and like was mentioned, the alternative in front of you is basically changes the June decision to amend maybe a compromise in that 13th to 18th. And then you're looking at, yeah, what is, what is the long-term vision? Are we ever going to connect with this? Maybe one idea is the fact that even if it's built with just a sidewalk between 13th and 18th and not a path, it doesn't preclude in the future that you could actually come in and buy some more right-of-way and put the path in, right? So nothing we were doing would ever preclude that if, if that decision was a point of contention. So what is really important, I know there were schedules and things like that talked about, is that in order for us to refine these designs and then go back to the public and share the decision-making process and the impacts of all of these, like we're not, when we go back out to the public, it's not just going to be this alternative. We're going to step back through the options that were evaluated and how we got to this decision. We're not going to do that unless we have support from the city. This is a connecting highway. This is as much your road as, you know, DOTs and we need that decision in order to move forward. So I guess with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or Kevin with DOT as the supervisor is here to support as well. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I not ask first?
Alder Killian was first in the.
Oh, so we're using the request to speak. I just gave you one of these, so.
Okay.
Anyway, I just, I just wanted to address your comment about Mr. Clements. Mr. Clements, I spoke with him today at length and his compliments were for the DOT. He said anytime I had a question for the DOT or interacted with them, they got back to me within 24 to 48 hours. His concerns were the responses from our city. So I just wanted to clarify that he was not unhappy at all with the information he got from the DOT.
All right, thank you.
And I will address the other, is this the time for me to address my issue or not? Not when she's speaking.
Your prerogative. I guess if, if we have our, Stephanie here for questions, let's do that first if you're amenable. Yes. So questions for Stephanie? Got it. Anyone ahead of Tom here want, wanted to have a question? Okay, Alder. Oh. We're.
All right.
Alder Neal.
I'm sorry to be random.
Well, let's, we'll take advantage of, of a person who took a trip up here for this.
Thank you for being here and thank you for your input. This kind of thing is very helpful. And I'm sorry I did miss that, that last meeting. I would have been a, a big pain there probably too. But I was out enjoying a trip, you know, and driving and encountering all kinds of traffic in places. Is there any reason, and I asked this question because I ran into this on three separate trips this, this summer in our state and in Michigan. And I've also seen things like this for a long time. Is there any reason why we can't consider for, especially about these rear-end collisions and whatnot, having a single lane roundabout at 8th Street, 10th Street and 13th Street and a very minimal median for that stretch too? This would prevent people from doing the middle of the block left turn to go into a driveway or wherever they want to go to. And as you know, I'm sure roundabouts are probably the number one best way, barring red lights, I guess, to, to eliminate or greatly reduce rear-end collisions. When collisions might happen, they tend to be far less severe than if they, in a regular, you know, intersection. Now, I find, I've found all kinds of roundabouts and I, I think people might have preconceived notions of what is a roundabout. Oh, it's this big, huge installation that, you know, takes up forever and whatnot. But I, I have seen them used in neighborhoods, in Milwaukee, in Madison, in a little neighborhood with a little island and you come down the street, you go around it, you can take a right, you go around it, you can go straight ahead, you go around it, you can take a left, or you can make a U-turn, go all the way back the way you came from. And it certainly, you know, sure slows things down in the neighborhood. It works. If we had at 8th, 10th and 13th, single lane roundabouts, if we had medians along that stretch to prevent mid-block turns, where would all of our rear-end collisions come from? And why is that not a better solution than what we have here with a, a center lane that, you know, might be full or might be the site of another rear-end collision, collision from an inattentive driver?
Point of order.
So what, why?
We're talking about, if you're talking about a design modification, I think that should probably be brought back at, at another time.
No, I'm asking an expert a question about design.
I, I mean, I could, let me just, high-level characterization. Typically, in the DOT world, roundabouts are considered when you're looking at needing to control an intersection differently. So say those intersections needed to be controlled with signals or an all-way stop, that would typically then trigger, you also evaluate a roundabout. That is not the case at 8th, 10th and 13th due to the traffic levels and the crashes aren't necessarily occurring because people are pulling out from those intersections, right? So one, there's a, there's the trigger to study that. And then two, there would then be, let's just say that there, that's a feasible alternative. The, the controversy I could envision is putting a barrier median down the, the entire project between those intersections that you're talking about. So everyone's driveway becomes a right-in, right-out, right? So you're restricting local access where then thereby everybody makes the U-turn. I'm not going to make a judgment of what these property owners would say, but I could tell you that that's probably more difficult than what we're trying to do. There would be likely opposition to that. And then for roundabouts, I understand where you're coming from in saying like, in a low-speed residential area, that maybe it's a, it's more of a traffic circle, there's a small island in the middle and those, on a state highway, that, that type of criteria would not be used. It would follow a more conventional roundabout if you were to study that. So I could surmise that at every intersection, all four corners would require acquisition as compared to the, the stop intersections that we have today. So I think there would be significant impacts to that kind of alternative.
Are you saying though, it's, it's non-doable?
It's a feasible alternative. The question to the stakeholder and the pocketbook would be, is, is it a reasonable alternative, right? So in the, in the environmental decision-making process, it, it could be a feasible alternative. The question would be, is it reasonable?
Might be option D.
Or C3, right?
Good question, Mr. Neal. I, I like roundabouts. Any other questions for Stephanie? Vicki? Alder Tierney?
Thank you. In your opinion, because I, I know if I were a homeowner, I would know how much property is being taken away from me. So I talked to Chad and A1, is that correct Chad? A2. A2 would be the least amount of property that we would have to take from those people on the roads. Is that correct?
So, well, the least amount of property is just putting back what's there, but putting back what's there doesn't address the crashes. So A2 requires less real estate than A1, right? Because the, the median is one foot narrower and then each travel lane is one foot narrower, thus the overall template is three feet narrower. So yes, and maybe just to let everybody know, the, the existing right-of-way from 6th to 13th is only 60 feet and then the existing right-of-way from 13th to 18th is 66 feet. So the amount of real estate you need kind of varies by where you're at in the project.
And my second question would be, when I'm looking at safety, you're looking at A1 and A2? Apparently that would be the safest or is it just that you're not sure about B1, B2 and then the C alternatives?
B1 and B2 do not address safety at all. They're more of kind of a replacing kind type option. So, right, that, that's an option to ignore safety, but that's a hard thing to overcome is that when you have crashes, saying you're going to ignore it. And honestly, when we went to the public in May, there was not a significant opposition to the two-way left turn lane. Like people thought that was a reasonable option. Now we can only take, characterize that from the people who chose to come to the meeting and from the people who chose to give us comments. So when there's the comment that I've, you've received a whole bunch of calls, we've received none of those comments. So if you've received comments, we would be happy to take those phone records and, and address those people's comments. In addition to A1 and A2, which address the safety, right? So with, with Mr. Clements' comments and the bike ped committee's comments, we came back with alternative C1, which puts left turn lanes at key areas, right? It put left turn lanes at 7th, 10th, 13th, and then there's, there was more of the twiddle section between Josick and 8. We have some access issues there at Lamb's Market, which we'll be working through. Those aren't critical to whichever alternative we pick. We, we put turn lanes at those critical locations and we agreed that that would address where the crashes are occurring. So that would provide you a typical section that kind of goes in and out. So that limits that consistency that Ms. Rasmussen was talking about. That is a feasible and reasonable alternative. When those were taken to the infrastructure committee, right, the vote was stick with A2 from 6th to 13th. And that is, that's the section that the crashes are happening. The DOT has analyzed that section. They have taken that actually through a safety funding process and the twiddle qualifies for safety funding, which actually is a 90% federal, 10% state funding for the center of turn lane. And then ultimately, because the crashes were less from 13th to 18th, in that, say, 1,300-ish feet, the option was to take that back to the existing typical section and not put the twiddle in. Now, we have received or a, a comment or two, whether it was verbally or written, right, we can't force everybody to write their comments down, that there have been rear-end crashes in that section. And that's where people choose to speed up and maybe they are less likely to obey the speed limit as they're coming in and out of the city. So.
Guilty.
The C, right, the C1 did address the crashes.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about because I used to live out in the town of Easton and took that road in and out every day. And guilty, when I hit the 35 mile an hour and then you're going to 55, it was a 35 and.
Right.
End up.
Right.
Before I hit the 55 and, and I was right in line with the traffic in front of me and the traffic behind me was doing the same thing. So. And my last question would be, if we did that, no, part of this and part of that, how would that affect the landowners wherever we're expanding north of 13th? I, I have a real big concern, my three biggest concerns on this are safety. How much property would be taken from the people that are directly affected and, and cost?
So.
Safety, number one.
Yeah. So to, to answer the question about the real estate, east of 13th, I think, was what you were asking. You said north, but I think you meant east. East of 13th, so it, it's kind of twofold. Like if you were to put back what's there today and you wouldn't really need any right-of-way because it fits in there today, right? What we're talking about with this C2 alternative includes the path is somewhat equivalent actually to A2, right? Because you're, you're losing half of the, the two-way turn lane in the middle, which is, you lose six feet and then you're adding five feet to the outside. So really, the real estate through here is comparable east of 13th between C2 and A2 if we were to carry A2 all the way. So it's, it then becomes more of a product of, do I want the path or do we look at continuity of the twiddle? And then if, if a path ever became necessary or you, you had a plan that added some circulation into the city, neither. into the city, neither option precludes that, I guess is the point I want to make. But the real estate is generally the same.
Okay. And then A2 has sidewalks on both sides, correct?
Correct. So the sidewalk, there are sidewalks existing on the south side, and then in the proposed condition, or in the existing condition on the north side from Thirteenth to Eighteenth, there is no sidewalk. But the alternatives include sidewalk, which would come at a city cost share, which was voted on separately. So there's a 20% cost share wherever there's a new sidewalk. And that's been spelled out, and I believe passed through the committee. I think one thing that we didn't mention is that if there's a path going in, the city pays the cost difference between the path and the replacement sidewalk.
Okay.
So yes, sidewalk on both sides.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Alder Henke.
Oh, thank you. And the air just turned off, so we get to hear everyone. Great conversations. I mean, I would just recommend, all these questions should come to Infrastructure Committee meetings. I didn't see any Alders there. I saw one citizen one day and two citizens the other day, and the Bike and Ped showed up twice, I think, to our meetings. I would much rather be having all these conversations at the committee level. We shouldn't be spending, going on, it's going to be 11 before we're out here, talking about this. I mean, if people have concerns, come to the committee meetings. I mean, that's what they're there for, and I have no problem listening to everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that everybody knows how they're going to vote on this. I'd like to call the question.
Okay, we have a call the question, a second on that.
I have a second.
With a second. Hang on a second. According to our rules, we would continue the speaking, but we have no one lit up at this point, unless somebody had something more to say there. You could vote no here. The motion is on calling the question. With a second. I didn't hear, I think it was Watson, yeah. Seeing no discussion.
You may begin voting. First, timed out.
So if you think you wanted to still talk, you would...
Yep.
You would vote no here. Otherwise, vote yes.
Motion to call the question passes seven to three.
So we're on the main motion.
You may begin voting on item 250910. Apparently, we have a tie. Alder, or Mayor. Denny, you can vote on your screen.
Okay. I'm going to assume we had some people had something they wanted to say, and I'm going to let them say it. Did I do that right?
No, we were voting on the motion.
We were voting on the motion. I'm sorry. Okay. Forgive me. I... Let's back that one up.
I don't know if the software, I would just go to the rules. I think the rules, parliamentarian, if I may, that you can change your vote until the vote's been called. Is that accurate? I don't.
Rule 9E says vote change. A council or committee member may change his or her vote on a matter up until the time the result of the vote is announced. That's an ordinance.
So the item fails five to six.
So for clarity, where does that take us now? With the item failed, it ends up back with the staff to come up with something else for INF, right? I mean, what's the result here?
We would be in concurrence with that.
It goes back to INF.
So let me, does everyone was clear on what they were voting on? Okay.
Are we voting on the lights next?
No. The lighting was in there, okay.
All right. We have up next... 25-0906, Committee of the Whole Resolution Adopting the City of Wausau Public Comment Statement. And I have a motion from Watson, second from Henke.
We have a motion from Alder Larson to amend. Would you like... Okay, I'm going to ignore that. Okay.
Okay. Motion and a second. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the statement so everybody can hear it.
One second. Pull that up. Okay, so the City of Wausau recognizes the value of public comment on local issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on city matters. Please identify yourself by name and state your address. Each statement made by a participant should be limited to three minutes. Direct all comments to the chair, not to members, staff, or other participants. People addressing the council shall not disrupt the orderly course of business. The chair values civil discourse and may interrupt, terminate, or prohibit public comment that do not adhere to these rules.
All right, we have the motion and the second. Seeing no comment.
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to zero.
Up next is file 250907, Committee of the Whole. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 2.16 Standing Rules of the Common Council, Rule 5, The Order of Business, Rule 6, Introduction of Business, Rule 13, Committees, Rule 16, Citizen's Right to Address Council, and Rule 17, Manner of Deliberation. It passed Committee of the Whole nine to zero, and then it was...
And then...
Eight to one.
For Rule 5, The Order of Business, passed eight to one.
Okay, so we had different votes.
Everything else was nine to zero.
Blended together, got it. Okay. With motion, motion from Watson, second from Lukens, Alder Killian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this the appropriate time? I'm not sure anymore for me to address Order of Business.
Yes, it is.
Okay. It's my personal opinion that in relationship to moving the placement of Item D, Communications' Recommendations from the Mayor toward the end of the meeting, this item should remain in the original position. If you watch the public access video of the Committee of the Whole on August 5th, you will note that many of the concerns expressed were related to one individual holding the office of Mayor and his actions at the onset of his role as mayor, not the role of a mayor in general. As I pointed out at the Rules Committee, Wisconsin Statute 62.09 Sub-A, Sub-B states, "The mayor shall from time to time give the council such information and recommend such measures as the mayor may deem advantageous to the city. When present, the mayor presides at the meetings of the council. It would be appropriate to think, by the way the statute is written, addressing the mayor presiding at the meetings of the council in the same sentence, that the statute is indicating that the information and recommendations are at the council meeting as the mayor is presiding. Why then is this responsibility of the mayor being so highly debated? Let's just, as a council, move on to really important city business and leave such insignificant matters alone. I did not support this at the Committee of the Whole, and I will not support this this evening." Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. We had robust discussion about this in Committee of the Whole, and I think that where we came out the other side was, it doesn't really matter who the mayor is. In the past, mayors have chosen to not avail themselves of a comment item. But what we have now is we have a situation where, before we ever get to the business of the day, we are here to do the public's business. And on multiple occasions, before we can get to the business of the day, we are ensnared in an hour of procedural conflict about this particular comment period, recognizing that if this is for some benign communicative matter, and this is the conversation we had in the Committee of the Whole, there is nothing that's going to get said there that won't keep until we have taken care of the public's business. The opportunity to speak is certainly still there. The opportunity to participate in the business of the day exists by passing the gavel, and we've done that effectively here. But if there's something that is so pressing that it won't keep until we've wrapped up the public's business that they want to hear us work on, then it needs to be an email, a phone call, or a press release, because there can't be anything of such abject urgency that it won't keep until later in that session. Still happening, it's just not happening up front. And that was a lot of the discussion we had at Committee of the Whole, was, we didn't want to take that period away, but we need to really adjust the order with which it takes place. Because we've had so many meetings that have devolved into conflict before we ever get to business item number one, that we've been really unable to manage that effectively, and this really does that. Get the business taken care of, that people come and sit here to see happen. And then if we want to comment and fight about procedures and, you know, make announcements or whatever it is, make those announcements just like public comment. People come up at the end, they have their public comment. Towards the end, mayor has public comment. If any of us have comment, make it. But get the work done first. And that's where I feel this takes us. So when we came out of Committee of the Whole, I think there's a reason we came out eight to one, is because we were all clear in wanting to do the actual work of governing first. And that really is where we came to this decision. Thank you.
May I respond?
Yes. Alder Killian.
It feels to me that, though, if you do review the video from the Committee of the Whole, you say it doesn't matter which mayor it was. Most of the comments at that Committee of the Whole were related to Mayor Denny. And, you know, every time we do something new, we have to learn from our experiences. And it's true, when Mayor Denny took office, he probably made some procedural errors at our committee meetings, at our council meetings. But what I saw him do was recognize the concerns that were expressed by the council and make changes. So why is it so important that we keep bringing up a mistake that somebody made? Yesterday, I mean, I go over my packets 1,000 times before I come to a meeting, because I really want to know what I'm talking about. Yesterday, I went over my packet for Human Resources 1,000 times. Guess what? I didn't look at what time the meeting was, so I came in 15 minutes late. We all make mistakes. We don't keep harping on those mistakes and making people feel guilty and bad about them and try to demean them. We lift up the people that we work with. Mayor Denny, in my opinion, has worked very hard to listen to the concerns of the council, and I see absolutely no reason, and it doesn't matter if other mayors called up comments and recommendations, Wisconsin statutes say that it is the right of the mayor to do that. So, I mean, I don't know what the big deal is about Mayor Denny taking the option of wanting to make comments and recommendations and doing them in an agendized fashion, as we've asked him to do. And if he doesn't go to the podium, or doesn't stand up there for an hour and makes a few comments, I don't know why we're making such an issue out of that. I think that's, I think this is what has utilized our time, and not being able to do city business are the concerns that have been expressed. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I might just add to that. I sent out an email earlier, and if you don't know, or if it doesn't dawn on everyone, the public doesn't care, cares about the product, they don't care about the process.
Point of order. Just Mayor Denny, I'm sorry, but if, I'm going to ask if you can go to the podium, because I just want, we set these rules and to follow them, right? I believe that you, for you to speak on this. I could ask the parliamentarian if I'm wrong. I don't know if you can answer that.
I wasn't going to speak to this, that's why I put out the email, but I tell you what, we're going to do that.
Just to enter, yeah, because then you get your chance to speak. Thank you.
This is stupid, okay? I wasn't going to talk to this, that's why I put out the email earlier in the week, and it turned into a virtual... You know, like I said, the public doesn't care about the process. And we've wasted a ton of time on this already. Four Rules Committee meetings, a Committee of the Whole meeting, which, by the way, I was out of state. You held the meeting anyway, the majority of the conversation was very specific to me. Alder Larson with Alder Rasmussen, the mayor this, the mayor that, one hour. Show me one time where I spent an hour pontificating on anything. So the generalizations are mischaracterizations and disingenuous. Nobody cares about the process. So the email was not, was to give you that point that I was making with not being involved in the Committee of the Whole, and a couple other points that I made, so that it wouldn't waste the public's time standing here or standing there, having this silly discussion. It wasn't meant to invite a virtual reply, reply-all meeting with council, president, the city attorney, and all members coming along for the ride. That was out of order, that was inappropriate. And I'll deal with that tomorrow. This isn't a hill to die on, and I really don't care. I'll follow whatever rules you want, but it would be appropriate that you do them with the proper meaning behind and the intent of the rules. The rules aren't to disrupt, the rules are to make it efficient and get a good product. And we've seen tonight, even with the rules we have, we struggled getting a good product, and here we are going on nine o'clock, and, you know, we're just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. With regard to your requests from this afternoon, at no point did you communicate to me that you were unavailable for a Committee of the Whole. Second, your request was to table, and the response I sent to you was appropriate with a CC to the council to advise you that the council's rules are our rules. We have the right and the ability to change those rules or adjust those rules at any time, and that's what's happening here. So to address those comments, that is what happened. We had a Committee of the Whole, we had a majority, we had a quorum, we took care of it, and here we are today. So with that, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and no one in queue to speak. We'll go ahead and ask the clerk to call the vote. I don't see him in the queue. Is he... Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Alder Larson.
You know, thank you. I wasn't going to speak tonight either, but since my name was brought up in this conversation, I feel compelled to. A lot of this was, like the mayor said, it's unnecessary. But a lot of it has been brought on by himself. And by taking his communications and his recommendations... And by taking his communications and his recommendations from the mayor and using them as a tool to ambush the council, as he's done in the past, without giving us a, a choice to, a chance to respond, things needed to change. I mean, this is our council meeting. This is not the council meeting and the mayor. The mayor's here to, to chair our meeting and, and keep order in our meeting. And that hasn't happened. He's failed us in that, in that, I mean, how many times have the people come in here and waving, waving, clapping, and waving, waving stuff around and, and disrupting our meeting, when the chair should be keeping that? He should be keeping order in here for us so we can, so we can do our business. And that is, that is one of the main concerns I think a lot of my colleagues have had, and why it's gotten pushed to the end of the meeting. And thank you.
Right. I think the work of the Rules Committee was well explained at the Committee of the Whole. In fact, we had the chair of that committee, former Alder Gisselman, set and essentially co-chaired that meeting to explain the work of his committee. So I think when we left, we were all clear on the intent.
And, and, I'm sorry, I don't mean to...
But with that, I mean, with, without additional council members in queue.
I, I'd just like to add that I, I think that the Rules Committee worked hard on this, the, the Committee of the Whole worked hard on this, and, and Alder Gisselman worked hard on this, you know, and I, and I really think that we need to honor him with our vote. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Denny, final comment?
Sure. Again, I watched that Committee of the Whole meeting. Generalization atop of generalization, on top of generalization, Mr. Larson, not a single specific, not one example. It, it, that's not a, your comment that this is your meeting, I'm going to correct you, Mr. Larson, this is the people's meeting, and they are here to see the business.
Our rules require that you direct your comments to the chair, and you are now on the attack for Alder Larson, so please follow that rule.
Yes, I am. Okay, gotcha. Yes. The, it's the people's meeting. It's a state statutory, she, Alda Killian read off a few of the statutes that apply. It, it governs how we do business, and it's there so that the people can see the decisions being made openly and transparently. That's the intent. It's not your, it's not your meeting, it's the people's meeting, and that's what we're here for. It's the product, not the process. Let's, I, I offered you every, all of the locals, similar cities, I gave you four or five examples where they have this outlined. It was never once addressed in any of the Committee of the Whole, or the committee meetings or Committee of the Whole. So you, we're going, we're going, make your own rules. I just don't like being besmirched for something that I'm trying to work with you on, and like I said, let's go. It, it's silly, I'll live with your rules, I don't care.
Okay, thank you for that. Final comment, Alder Lukens.
Thank you. Well, the rules, the rules are, are for a reason, and Robert's rules that I have right here are, are for a reason. And it is for, to maintain, you know, a meeting to get business done, the purpose of, of the meetings are to get business done, get the people's business done. But, you know, I think that there, I've studied a lot of this since I became an Alder, and the council, this is a council meeting, so it's, you know, the council, and with all due respect, okay, but, one, I, I want to, I know I'm speaking all over the place right now, we had meetings where we had Boy Scouts here, and we had quite a circus, and that shouldn't be. We are role modeling what civic, you know, discourse should be, and it should be respectable, and it shouldn't be a circus. And so I think because things do become heated, having it at the end is appropriate, so that we do the business if we have, you know, people here attending the meeting, waiting to be recognized, whatever, so that it doesn't end up in this free-for-all, and that's the reason for the rules as well. I think, you know, we have a long history of all of the rules and the way, way things are supposed to go, and that's, that's what we should be following. And I think, you know, the, one thing that, that, I don't know if the public knows this, I, I've learned many things since I was elected Alder, and my power as an Alder is when we are all here together. Our power to set policy, to make policy, that's the, that's, that's it, okay? Me by myself, I'm, I'm here to serve. But also, and I mean this with all due respect too, but the mayor is the face of the city. It's not a hierarchy with the council and the mayor. So I think, I think that's important. Yes, we all want to do think, we all should be treating each other with respect. So anyway, but I, I do think everyone, I think the mayor should have a chance to speak, and I think having it at the end, though, is most appropriate, so we can get our business done, and so that we don't, you know, it's just not good to have all of this, you know, in, at the beginning of the meeting, especially starting out meetings this way. Thank you.
Thank you for that. With no one else in queue, we'll ask the clerk to call the vote. Motion passes eight to two. With the vote having been taken on the item, we'll return control of the meeting to the mayor. Thank you.
I apologize to the public for suffering, making you suffer for 12 minutes on that one. Wasn't my intention. All right. Next is file number 25, okay, we've got a motion, we've got to suspend the rules under 6B filing and/or 12A referral of resolutions requires a two-thirds vote, and we have a motion from Watson, second from Lukens.
Alda Rangan, do you mean to amend the motion? No?
No, sorry. I tried to hit the motion button because my whole app is messed up right now. Something, we'll have to look at it later. Sorry.
You may begin voting. Motion passes nine to one.
Okay, first item under suspension of rules is file number 250108, Public Health and Safety Resolution, approving or denying various licenses as indicated. That passed, that was approved four to zero. Why is there two different ones here pending?
I'm not sure. Sorry.
Okay. Can you confirm it was, it passed, it was approved four to zero?
It did pass committee, correct.
Okay. All right, motion from Lukens, second from Watson.
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to zero.
Up next is file number 250911, I'm sorry, 020430. It's a council resolution approving the selection process to fill District Five Aldermanic vacancy. Motion from Watson, second from Rasmussen.
Sorry, did you say you can't request to speak?
Okay, request to speak from Alda Killian. Your light's not, yeah, you're on.
Okay. The filling of this position should be dependent on the method chosen by council. Yes, all of those different methods were mentioned in the resolution, but the, it was agendized to fill the vacancy. It is my understanding that there are three options available to us. They are leaving the seat vacant until the resident of District, residents of District Five have the ability to choose their representative in the next election, appointing a representative from applicants who apply for the position, and holding a special election also for the residents of District Five to choose their own representative. The only option that has been agendized is a selection process to fill the vacancy, not inclusive of the other two positions, or the other two options, leaving vacant for District Five representatives to choose their representative or a special election, allowing them to do the same thing. This must be and should be a democratic process, not a process whereby some individuals spearhead a campaign to quickly fill the seat with someone of their choosing. This raises a really important question that should be answered. I've asked it and had no answers. At whose direction was this resolution molded and written? This isn't a rhetorical question, it's a question that must be answered prior to the council proceeding with the resolution presented to us this evening. From what I understand at this point, no one is claiming to author this resolution, which I find strange. As one of the 11 elected representatives of the city, I feel that any unwillingness to answer this question will reflect, reflect very poorly on our process. Obviously, I will not support this resolution, and I would like to make a motion to bring this back to either a special meeting of the council or the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be agendized in a matter through which any of the three options could be selected by our body.
Thank you. So is, is that a motion, or do you have a question for the, was that a motion for an amendment? I apologize, I wasn't catching it. When there was partly a question in there, the clerk may have an answer into where, where it came from.
Yeah, so I, the, the council president directed me to poll for quorum for a Committee of the Whole meeting last, was it two weeks ago, the week, was that just last week, of, of Labor Day, which we were having trouble getting a quorum. So I suggested of myself drafting a resolution to allow you guys to discuss how you would like to handle this seat. So we utilized, or we refer back to what happened, I want to say it was 2015, when, 2019, when Karen Kalbach, Kal, Kalbach, sorry, she resigned her seat and looked at those agendas and meeting minutes. We also looked to the process that the county board is utilizing to refill that seat with the setting, uh, application period and allowing them to submit a letter of interest and then optional resume materials. So I take full responsibility for drafting that resolution, so, to allow you guys to talk about how you would like to handle that vacancy at this meeting versus scheduling an alternative meeting.
I guess my concern was that it was agendized as filling the vacancy. It does not say, it has been agendized to give us the options of choosing how to fill the vacancy, and I think that has a distinct difference in meaning. So I did not feel that the way it was agendized, it, it was appropriate.
Sorry, I get, fill was probably the wrong words, by approving the selection process to handle or to address the District Five Aldermanic vacancy. Probably could have been worded differently.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. We've had two, in recent history, we've had two vacancies on the council. It doesn't matter how the seat became vacant, whether someone passes, whether they resign or whatever. In both of those instances, when Alder Ed Gale resigned for health reasons, we then took applications from within that district, and those applicants were invited to a meeting where they all introduced themselves, there were three, and we then took a vote, much like we take when we select our water commission member, our plan commission member, our council president, whatever, we did an on-floor ballot vote. All of those people had been provided packet materials. When one of them had a majority, we swore that person in, and that person finished the meeting alongside of us. We did the same thing when Karen Kalbach resigned her position due to her health situation. And at that point, we then also took applications within the neighborhood, there was a few for that as well. We picked one application, and that person served until there was an election, at which time Alder Watson took that seat. So my concern with the sudden passing of Alder Gisselman is that District Five right now is left with no voice. And I communicated that to the mayor early on after this happened, was that during the month of August, I felt that it was prudent for all of us to absorb what had happened, let the community absorb what had happened, and that at some point, forward-thinking, we would have to begin to think about what the process to fill that seat would look like and restore that input back to District Five. It is, we have less than a year till the next election, which is kind of a defining moment, because it's not an entire term that needs to be served out by temporary appointment, it's a partial term. And the neighborhood down there can decide who they would like to send in terms of applicants, interested applicants can all apply, they can all come in and talk to us about, you know, why they want to serve, because that's what has happened historically. County used a similar process with their executive committee. And at that point, and we already have had two instances where we've come up in a tie, and we forced a vote on the part of the mayor. District Five right now remains unrepresented. And so to make sure that there is a representative there that can take people's calls, reach out to the staff, and participate in the voting, I suggested that we figure out sooner than later what we will do with the seat for District Five. We either need to appoint somebody or not. My understanding was that based on the time and expense involved in holding a special election, that that really is not an available option to us at this point. If we select and appoint a representative to finish the term, come December, that person can decide if they wish to run for the seat, to serve a full term, or not. And other people then also can throw their hat in the ring. But I think that it is obvious that, just based on the concerns that I'm hearing, I ask, what are people afraid of? If we have qualified applicants from that district that show up seeking to serve, and we select one of those applicants, what are we afraid of? Why are we afraid to give that district a voice for seven months, rather than have that seat sit in silence? And I get the fact that if there was 20 months left, you can be heard up here, ma'am, 20 months left in the term, obviously you would select something different. But we are close to an election, we're close to the submission period for election papers coming this winter. I think it's fair that we would put an interim Alder in place and let that person communicate on behalf of those citizens. So it just, it seems like a fair process, we've used it before, and it's similar to what Marathon County is using, and I would, I would request that we move forward with a similar process. That would allow the clerk to post the vacancy, collect the applications, vet the applications to make sure that the residents are of the appropriate age and that their address is within the district, and then whether there's two applicants or 10, bring them all in, and we will pick someone. And I think we are all capable of making a reasonable choice. And I just, I think that's a fair process to use. It's also consistent with past practice. There's no reason not to. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that, if I may.
Take, take, take a note of that, and we'll, we'll keep coming. If you want to put your, press your, hold on, hold on, hold on a second, Watson. Let me ask the parliamentarian, stand by. Okay. Alder Killian, if you could push your Request to Speak button. We'll work in third.
My button doesn't work.
Okay. Okay. So... Got it. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would... I guess Alder Rasmussen took away everything I was going to say. So I... Without further ado, I would like to make a motion that we go to what the committee has... What the council has done in past practice by interviewing applicants and selecting a qualified applicant from there to serve. So not only so they can, you know, get their feet wet to see if this is what they want, but perhaps maybe we'll have a nice qualified person to serve us a full term. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the current motion that's on the floor. So Alder Killian.
Then I'll second it.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just because we've done that previously doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. I think you have to look at every situation differently and not just say, well, we did that in the past, so that's what we should do again. My first question is, when somebody... How do people even find out about this opening so that they can apply for it?
There would be a... I'll let the clerk address that because it's... It has a timeline and the announcement methodology in there.
Officially, in the resolution, I have that... Directs the city clerk to give public notice in the designated official newspaper and publish on the City of Wausau website the District Five elderperson vacancy. So I... Not to keep referring to the county, but I know they had a banner on their homepage that notified of their District Five vacancy.
Okay. Thank you. My second point is, I don't think that it is... I think it is the decision of the people of District Five to choose who they want to represent them. I don't think... I don't think that we should be picking that for District Five. To me, okay, if a special election is too expensive, then we wait until the next election, which is only seven months away. There have already been people appointed in Alder Gisselman's spot for all of the standing committees. So that has already been taken place. I don't feel right about the council choosing the representative when, let's face it, 75% of the people don't go out onto the city's website or read the Daily Herald. So we're going to have just a few, a handful of people possibly, that apply for this because they just plain didn't know it was available. So because of those reasons, I will not support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Neal.
Actually, Alder...
Alder Killian.
Oh, okay.
Get your virtual light on.
Yeah. Based on what Alder Rasmussen said about past practice, I agree with Alder Killian that because we've done something in the past doesn't mean we should do it now. There are many past practices of the city that I think need to be changed, to be honest. You talk about giving them a voice for the next few months. Well, in my mind, when you select someone to represent them, you're taking away their voice. You're not giving them a voice. And the people of District Five need to make their own choices. Of all the council people up here, I can probably speak most clearly about what Alder Gisselman would have wanted. Alder Gisselman and I have had... And my son have had lunch together for two or three hours every week. I know his feelings, and he would not want us to choose who represents his district. He has told me in no uncertain terms... We talked about limited terms for council people. And Alder Gisselman's... I supported limited terms, and Alder Gisselman said, no. He said, whatever the people want is what should happen, not what the council thinks is appropriate. His whole emphasis was on letting the people speak for themselves. And I think by taking applications and appointing somebody to his district would not be respectful of him, and I don't think it's the appropriate thing to do. I think we should be leaving that seat vacant until it's time for a real election. But for special elections, you said you didn't think there was time, I believe, Alder Rasmussen. I think we have until February of next year to hold a special election. Is that correct?
We don't think... I don't think we have this option in this case because the entire council is up for reelection in April. And so...
So that February deadline doesn't matter?
Correct.
Okay. Anyway, we can't hold it, apparently, time-wise. But as far as cost, I don't believe that the cost of allowing someone in a district to choose their own representative is excessive. We have millions of dollars that we blow on properties for very superficial reasons, in my opinion, that we have to spend millions of more dollars cleaning up. We certainly would have the money for a special election to allow them to choose their own representative. So I do not think this seat should be filled with applicants. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Neal.
Thank you. Well, I cannot speak to Gary's mind on this issue. Never discussed it with him. Never really had a lot of lunches with him or anything. But as an alderperson on this body, I know that I represent a district, and I'm often contacted by constituents from my district about big things and little things, things I had to go to bat for them for, things I had to make calls for, emails for, connect people. That's part of our job. And over the course of seven months, I imagine I do that a lot. To not have anybody doing that for District Five, I don't think is an option that I would think is right for the seat that Gary held. So therefore, vacancy until April, to me, is... That is not representing District Five whatsoever. Special election, I guess, as we've said, doesn't seem to be a doable thing because of time and expense. Heck, what if, you know, we had three or four people? Then we'd have a primary before we could have an election. Who knows? I don't know. It could go on and on. And then by the time that was done, then maybe that person would be in the seat for three months before they have to go ahead and do it all over again. I think it's important, as a working body, that we have somebody here that represents that district and will be answerable to that district. If that person, you know, does not comport themselves well, if the district doesn't feel that they represented them well, well, good luck in April if they want to run. But in the meantime, they would be here with a job to do, just like we all have a job to do. I don't think it's good to just leave this seat vacant. Heck, we've had already a couple of five-to-five votes here. I actually like the odd number so you don't have a lot of tiebreakers from the mayor to consider. For that, and probably reasons I can go on and on, but I just think it's pretty basic. Let's have somebody represent District Five. You know, we'll do our best to appoint somebody for that interim term to do the job, and then they will have to answer for the job they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder McElhaney.
Thank you. This is a hard decision for me because Gary and I actually had this discussion. Not that he... It was the discussion about me because I was very close to resigning my seat six months ago. A couple of people knew, and Gary and I had that conversation. He said, Becky, you were elected by the people of District Six. You promised them that you would serve during your time, that you asked for their votes. And it is, if you leave, the council will try to fill your seat. That is not fair to your residents. So that was the conversation that we had a couple of times. I understand the need or the desire to fill a seat to help represent the people of District Five. I absolutely understand that. And so I'm really torn. Here's the other issue, is that I know that, you know, when Karen Kelbach, she was out of commission for a very long time before she resigned her seat. She was ill for a very long time, missed many, many meetings. It has been before where we have had a seat not filled. I've only talked to a couple of people... Gary and I shared a neighborhood meeting, and I talked to a couple of people at that neighborhood meeting, and we discussed this. And they too were torn. They are happy to be represented, but they were... They're concerned. They feel that there's polarizing feelings within the council right now. I mean, we don't have a great reputation with some. And they were concerned of how this was going to go down. So that was... I just wanted to relay what Gary's message was. I, you know, it isn't the same thing of me resigning than somebody, you know, resign... You know, being out of a seat. But I'm really having a difficult time in voting for this right now because of that conversation.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I guess just one final comment. We have big decisions coming forward between now and the end of the year. We have a budget, nearly a $100 million budget. We have borrowing. We have... Every district needs someone that they can go to when there's a problem, when there's an inspection issue, when there is problems to be solved, when the grass doesn't get cut and the sidewalk doesn't get shoveled and the, you know, sofa sits on the boulevard. And, you know, all of these things that we all... These calls that we all take. There is no one there to do that work. And, you know, during the time when Karen Kelbach served, she continued to serve in spite of her serious illness and made as many meetings as she could make. And only when she planned to relocate to Oklahoma to be near her son, did she give up that seat. And we had multiple people apply. We made a choice, you know? And I think that there's some big decisions to be made. And we're going to sit here and have 10 districts make those choices instead of 11. And I just feel like I... You know, I'm sorry if there's people out there that think that we all are going to run around and conduct a campaign for District Five. No one is. People interested that live down there, come on in and apply. We will work with anybody they send. And, you know, I think if there's this conspiracy theory stuff and people are fearful of who we would pick as 11 reasonable people, that says a lot. But I really think that when we come down to the stuff that needs to get decided... We got decisions coming, probably coming again on Highway 52. That's that district, too. There's no one there to communicate with right now. And if every single one of us in this room had a choice, we would have Gary Wright back here in that seat. But we don't get that luxury. So we need to make a choice. And I think we need to find a way to make sure that people have a contact to go to. And like Alder Neal said, that person is really going to be accountable for the work they do, just like we all are. And that really is where the fairness gets insured. Whoever's sitting in that seat is going to have big shoes to fill. And we need to just make a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a hard one for me, too, because I... So I appreciate, by the way, everyone's comments here, all of my colleagues, Alder McElhaney, with you sharing also a meeting with, you know, the district. I really appreciate it, hearing from you as well. And I see both sides. I too, you know, I... It should be... It should be the residents of the district deciding. But as I think about the timing... I was thinking about a longer timing. And if it's December, you know, that's right. That's the time to file papers. It's not that long for that person. And I guess what's striking me is when I think about how often people reach out to me in my district and need things, all sorts of things, big and little. So it would be... It's a hard choice for me, too. I think, though, I probably would... I would, I think, vote for us. I would hope that all of my colleagues that... I would think, I mean, we are all... I believe we all take our positions very seriously, and we try to do the best that we can. And so for me, then, I would like to have someone there to help the people. And I do believe it is true. Their job, that will speak... They'll speak for themselves if they decide to run. Then in April, you know, the citizens can decide. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the concern, Alder Neal and others, for taking the vote load off of me. But, you know, we've proven we can be functional. We had Pat Peck come out for a long period of time while he was ill. But there was one thing I heard, I think, twice, and I think it's important to talk about just from a process standpoint, is that we allow somebody to get their feet on the ground, see if they like it. I think we want to be very careful we're not looking to give somebody an advantage. At one point in time, Jim... A former mayor was appointed. He vowed he wasn't going to run so that he wouldn't be given an unfair advantage. So let's not have that as a motivation or consideration. Seeing no further questions. Jim Schaefer. Jim Schaefer took... Was six months on the job. Shortest-serving mayor. And then they held a special election.
Just the notice of the special election would have to be 40 days. Sorry. The official... Like, my official notice to the voters of a special election would be 40 days before either a primary, if needed, or the election. So that would be setting us out late October-ish, roughly, right now. If you guys wanted to go that special election route, and it was signed by the mayor. So it would be like roughly the month of November and December till you'd start filing nomination papers for the spring elections. You may begin voting. Still not working. Sorry. No. Do you want... Yeah. Do you want to vote? Motion passes seven to three.
Okay. Up next. File 250911, Council Resolution Supporting Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Safe Drinking Water Loan Program for Lead Service Line Replacements to Allow the Professional Services Costs to be Up to 25% of the Amount Awarded to the City of Wausau. Mr. Lindman is here. We had some good news in a letter from the DNR that we can share. It's mostly good news. Mr. Lindman.
Thank you, Mayor.
First off, I'm sorry. We have a motion from Watson, second from Lukens. Eric.
Yeah. So, you know, we've... Since the lead service line funding came out, we've been having discussions with the Wisconsin DNR as far as how that funding gets spent. They make those final determinations. But this is a unique project. It's very difficult. We have to have significant communication with the residents. So on an ongoing basis, it's very continuous from the start. So on an ongoing basis, it's very continuous from the start, from the planning, up to construction, scheduling through construction, and even after construction. So some of our conversations with the DNR were that they wanted to limit what we could spend on non-construction activities, such as public outreach and meeting with the community. And we had a meeting with them back in May down in Madison, and we agreed at that meeting that, that we felt it was sufficient to provide up to 25% of the awarded amount to the municipalities for non-construction-related activities. The letter that came out that you see, they've restricted that to the construction value of that, which is, will make a difference for us on the amount that we can use for our oversight, our public outreach, our communications with the public. And if we want to maintain the level of communication that we're doing right now, the city would have to pick up those additional costs that, that the DNR would not. So we have spoken with the DNR. We have provided them that we disagree with that. And I would like the city council to also formally request and support the fact that the restriction should not be limited to just the construction cost, but the overall award amount for, for what the municipality gets. So.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think this is really important. I think that the communication that's been undertaken, both by the city and by Equiflow, to engage residents who are eligible and make them aware of what the project is, what they're eligible for, what the process looks like, that can't be, like, undervalued. And so even if these costs, say, would impact the number of lines that we could do in the course of a year, I really think that the outreach piece is key to making sure that we can do as many as possible when people understand that there's a program that can do this for them and, and get it taken care of. I think if we were, didn't have that component, and we were left to wait for people to call in here or come down here or apply online, we would not be getting near as much lead out of the ground as we are. So I am happy to support this, and I hope that it will cause the DNR to recognize that making sure that the community is clear on what the process is and what the outcomes are, like, matters, more than just the removal. And, you know, we want, while we have funding and time and, and the process lined up, we want as many of those pipes out of the ground as we can get, especially with the uncertainty that surrounds federal funding going forward. And so I am happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions.
I think Alder Killian.
Sorry. Light bulb.
I just wanted to say that I think, you know, I'm a strong proponent for public input. So I will support this. I think it's a critical issue that residents understand what's happening and be involved. My only concern would be that should we ever find out that every penny of that money that's being funded for public involvement were used for private gain by anyone, company or anyone, that I would like to bring this back for review. But in lieu of that fact, I would be supportive of this money for public engagement.
I appreciate that.
All right. Now seeing nothing further.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 0.
Okay. Up next is, is File Number 990916. It's a Finance Resolution Authorizing Continued Membership in SIFMAC for Policy Years 2026, 27, 28. I think that was, did we just go one year on that?
Yes.
Okay. So that's Scrivener's Air. We're going to go, am I right? 2026.
Yep.
Scratch 27 and 28.
Does that need a formal amendment?
We have a motion from Lukens, second from Rasmussen. It was.
At the committee, it was amended at the committee?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm prepared to make that motion.
Okay. So the vote, then, I didn't, no, it's that committee was.
It was, it was unanimous. It was, it was five to zero.
Five to zero, and it, it just included 26?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but I want to, yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna speak to that, so.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so SIFMAC, and we had a really good discussion on this. SIFMAC, Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company is, in its name, a mutual insurance company, which means a member organism, member municipalities, is actually form a cooperative. So that the premiums, any, any premium that's, that is collected, that's over and above the claims that are paid out, actually returned back to the members as, in the form of dividends. And that's important because, one, it keeps our premiums at a reasonable level, and two, you know, it's, as we are looking for, towards continued membership towards SIFMAC, now we've been a member, we've been a member of their liability policy since 2007, quite, quite a long time. And there's other mutual insurance companies out there. And we thought it was important to reassess, you know, our, is, is our, is our policy in line with what others are providing, are our premiums in line with others are providing? And we've, we've, we've talked about this in, in length for the last three meetings. But we're up to a deadline now because we have to decide now if we want to stay with SIFMAC for another year or if we want to bid out RFP. But if we wait for RFP, we're going to lose our dividends for 2024, which amounts to $66,000. So what the, so the final, you know, what the decision of the Finance Committee is, is that we are going to, we're going to continue SIFMAC for the year 2026. SIFMAC is, is, they're, they're okay with that. We're going to go out for RFP next year. We're going to look at other carriers. We're going to see if we're, if we're in a, if we're in the right position, a good value, et cetera, et cetera. And then for, and then moving forward, we can, we can make that, make that decision on, on how, how we're going to handle our liability insurance. So I'll make a motion to amend that we will, yep, I'm going to press my button. Thank you. And my button is not pressing?
I got it.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to amend for the, the resolution for the policy year 2026, and we will, I don't know if I need to add, we will go into RFP in 2026 or not, but.
Well, I think, I think we.
Just a motion to amend for 2026.
Kill 27, 28, and we'll be good.
That is correct. That's what we were going to do.
All right. Mike made a motion to amend.
I'll second the motion.
Second from Lukens, beat you to it on the button.
Oh, I, I'll look into this for the next meeting.
Okay. So we have motion and second on the amendment, drop in 26, 27, 28.
You may begin voting. The motion to amend passes 10 to 0.
Okay. So on the main motion to extend SIFMAC for 2026, it's amended. Motion is second is out there from Lukens and Rasmussen. Rasmussen to speak.
Yep. I just have a quick question. You know, I think that it makes sense to bid this out in the future years. I think, though, it's important to recognize that along with our membership in SIFMAC, we also have access to a large volume of training and advisory materials. So anyone that we are going to get quotes from, that has to be taken into account because that meets a lot of the needs within the departments. Separate from that, I think it definitely makes sense to do that. Bidding this out, though, I think we need to also be sensitive to the timing on that because we are also coming up, I believe, with a large bid process with our trash contract. And so depending on who's going to be the point person for this running out and getting insurance quotes, if that person is also Mary Ann and she's also tasked with the trash, that could be a full plate of work for one person. So be sensitive to the workload, I guess, for how that gets timed, is all I'm asking.
I'll just say bids for waste and refuse and recycling are due tomorrow.
Okay.
So they'll be opened at Board of Public Works at 11 o'clock tomorrow morning, and they'll go to Public Health and Safety.
Okay. So you'll be clear of that by the time this, thank God.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So that'll be a Board of Public Works with some interest. Must-see TV or show in person. All right. Mr. Neal.
Thank you. It's getting late. I think my brain is starting to just give up. We just voted the amended motion. Please explain to me what we're voting on now. Is this as amended or what makes this different?
Yes, this is as amended. So. Right. Resolution 990916, resolution from Finance Committee as amended.
So we're effectively taking out 27 and 28 again?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're vote, you're voting on the, the resolution as you amended it to take out two years.
Gotcha.
Seeing no questions.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 0 as amended.
Up next, File 0912, Council Resolution Approving Waiver of Right of First Refusal. It's a termination of deed restrictions and approval of the new deed restrictions at 400 South 86th Avenue. This is something that appears fairly regularly. They have a closing on the 16th or something like that, 15th. So that's why it's on here. Motion is from Lukens, second from Watson. No questions on that.
You may begin voting. The waiver of right of first refusal for the deed, number 25-0912. Motion passes 10 to 0.
Thank you. All right. So we're going into closed session. I can't guarantee you how long, and I, if we don't come back, in our opportunity, we have one taker on that. So we're, without objection, we're going to put this first so we can go into closed session and not if we'll come back for it later.
Tom Killian, 133 East Thomas Street. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the council members tonight who did appreciate and recognize the residents and citizens' input on the road project that was deliberated on. And, you know, I think that's very important we do so. Mr. Lindman just came up to talk about how important public engagement was, and that's why the body needed to communicate to the DNR such a thing. Surely, if just having meetings and committee meetings for public input was sufficient for a good policy process, then Equiflow would have to hold no such extensive public engagement. So it is worth the effort and the money. And, you know, something I had not planned to comment, but the Thomas Street project had been brought up, so that's something I'm familiar with. And I, I wanted to note just some of the positive things that had come out of that from extensive public input that at least a couple members of this body had also heated. You know, it had been split into phases. The second phase did not have the medians that the first phase did for multiple reasons, business considerations, but they were also very unpopular from the first phase. But more importantly, the project was perhaps unintentionally brought up tonight as something that should be celebrated from an engineering perspective because it turned out to be functional. It wasn't what the people want, but hey, it was functional. Actually, it was not. And celebrating kind of the engineering aspect of that road project would be like celebrating the engineering aspect of the Hindenburg, okay? It was somewhat of a disaster. In fact, nothing personal to engineers, but seven years ago, it came out, and you can watch the YouTube video, that a project that was purportedly for safety actually did no predictive safety analysis whatsoever. So I think AECOM and a bunch of firms made mad money off of that, but in terms of the purported objective apparently done very poorly, and that's not a matter of opinion, that, that's a matter of fact. And I think that also we have resolutions. They may not be followed anymore, but we did adopt a resolution that said the council would incorporate meaningful involvement of the public, particularly diverse low-income areas, when it came to all policy decisions. And finally, I just say, it was brought up that at the federal level, there wasn't support as much now for meaningful public engagement. Perhaps so, but we still live in Wisconsin, and the sign still says it's the city of Wausau. So to heck with the federal government on that. We have the ability of a municipal government to make sure, no matter what the poor decisions are in Washington, we stick up for our people here. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Up next is File Number, wow, where are we? 250112. We've seen this one before. It's a resolution approving continued engagement of SIFMAC-appointed legal counsel to represent the city and unelected city staff in the matter currently pending before the city's Ethics Board pertaining to the citizen complaint filed against Mayor Denny and related actions. Have a motion from Rasmussen, second from Lukens. And then we have two closed sessions. So are we looking to tap some public comment, or maybe public discussion? First, are we going to take both of these into closed session?
I don't have anything for open session for my item.
My motion was intended to begin to read the closed session.
Okay. So we have two closed session items. Do we have some, have a volunteer for the first one?
I'll volunteer for the first one. I will move that we go into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, Paragraph 1, Sub G of the Wisconsin statutes for conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, to receive information, and review privileged communications of legal counsel initially appointed by SIFMAC in the absentee ballot drop box matter before approving continued engagement to represent the city and unelected staff in the matter currently pending before the city's Ethics Board pertaining to the citizen complaint filed against Mayor Denny and related actions.
All right. Discussion.
Second.
Okay. So we, we, which one is the?
Alder Lukens said seconded it.
Right. So this is closed session item for the, for the first item. And the, the second closed session item doesn't have a, have a file number associated with it, so there's no action that will be taken on that. Is that correct?
You want that one read aloud as well, and we can take one more?
It will need to. We can do that.
I don't believe there was expected action taken on the, the second closed session on 901 Cherry Street. Were you planning any? Okay.
Okay. So it's an update. So I would enter, would it look for someone to read that second piece, and we'll put them together. Alder Lukens.
Okay. So I move that we enter into closed session pursuant to 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E of the Wisconsin statutes for deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed, closed session in regards to purposes of purchasing property at 201 North First Avenue and 901 and 1021 Cherry Street in the city of Wausau. at 201 North First Avenue and 901 and 1021 Cherry Street in the City of Wausau.
Okay. So the motion and second for closed session, that's a roll call vote.
Okay. I can do a roll call. Lukens?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Killian?
Aye.
Neal?
Aye.
McElhaney?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Tierney?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Hanky?
Aye.
Motion to go into closed session passes 10 to 0.
Hold up, just some rules here so we, everyone knows, there's two items that we'll be discussing. So we're going to go in without staff initially, and then depending on which one we take first, we'll call in the appropriate staff as required. So we might grab Randy first because that'll be quicker. The rest of the staff, if you're not involved in either of these two items, I don't, you don't need to stay. Ooh, do you want to get the door? You want me to get the door?
I can get the door.